March 10th. Lost the entire month already. March 10th. Four fairgrounds, present are Nat Lowell, John McLaughlin, Carl Borcher, Joe Marklinger, and Linda Williams. I'm acting chair this evening. I'm the vice chair. Barry is away, and Sylvia is still out. We do have a videotape, so if anybody is taping the meeting, please let the chairman know now. Andrew, anything to bring up at the beginning?
Um, yes.
Okay. We have called the meeting to order. We have the approval of the agenda, Nat.
Yes, we want to make a couple of changes to the agenda, so I'm going to make a motion that we, after the McLeod public hearing, we're going to move all the A and Rs, second dwellings.
And preliminary plans.
And preliminary plans up front.
Previous plans.
So that we don't, the previous plans, so the people don't have to wait all night for these actions. So with those changes, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Nat's made a motion to approve the agenda, moving the A and Rs, the secondary dwellings and the previous plans up behind Lee McLeod, which is special permit request 06-14. Is there a second? You guys are sitting.
Hold on.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Agenda has been amended. Just so anybody who's here for a special permit isn't alarmed, those items that we're moving up take about five minutes total. Now we have the minutes.
Since I'll make a motion to approve September 9th, December 9th, and February 10th, with some amendments that I made with Catherine earlier.
Okay. Nat's made a motion to approve September 9th, 2013, December 9th, 2013, and February 10th, 2014, as amended. Is there a second? Mr. Marklinger seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that was unanimous, and we're holding January 16th and January 30th to the April 14th meeting for further amendments. Alrighty.
Public hearings.
I believe the first three public hearings are going to be continued to April 14th, which is our next regularly scheduled meeting. Andrew, do those need motions to go over?
Uh, no, they're printed on the agenda, so that's fine.
Okay, and we already have extensions for those guys, right?
Yes, except for one.
It's been kind of a long going.
And you guys are taking care of that one till after town meeting?
Correct.
Okay. We have, the first public hearing is 0614 Lee McLeod, 27 Meadowview Drive. Is there anybody here to represent that? Alright, Andrew, take it away. Any comments about McLeod?
Uh, no. This, um, this is a standard-type application, and staff has reviewed it. The buildings remain in their existing location, so we recommend approval.
Okay, thank you. Any board members have a question about McLeod? Hearing none. We'll go to the public. Any public comment on McLeod?
The secondary residential lot.
Yep. Seeing none.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Nat's made a motion to close the public hearing. John seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, what's your pleasure?
Make a motion to approve the secondary lot.
Okay. Nat's made a motion to approve the McLeod secondary lot. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Now we're going to go to the A and Rs. Which is Joyce Barroway, 7650, 7651 Sperry, 7652 Blueprint, 7653 42 Union Street, 7654 John Bruno, 7655 Martin and Holly McGowan, 7656 Lance Kelly and Martha Kelly, 7657 Richmond Gray Point Development, 17 Woodland Drive and 21 Woodland Drive.
Does anyone have any?
Any questions? Joe?
Am I voting?
No, not on, not on the A and Rs. Just, yeah. It's just Nat, myself, and John. Any comments, John, on the A and Rs? Nat?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Endorse.
7650, 7651, 7652, 7653, 7654, 55, 56, and 57.
Endorse.
Endorse.
Nat's made a motion to endorse.
Per staff recommendation.
Per staff recommendations on the A and Rs. Any further discussion on that motion? John, you want to second that?
Yes.
John seconded that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the A and Rs are done. We have two secondary dwellings, Richmond Gray Point Development, 42 Skyline Drive.
We take them separate, because the staff has a change.
Okay, we're going to take these separately, and we have Ben and Melanie Barnes at 44 Main Street. I believe there is a comment from staff on 42 Skyline Drive.
Yes, Madam Chair. The driveway for the second dwelling.
Hang on a second. Ed, do you want to come down so you can hear it? Okay.
The, the current driveway intersects a paper street called Clay Street, which is actually outside of the lot's boundaries. So, in the event that Clay Street is actually improved, the driveway will be in conflict with the zoning bylaw. It needs to be at least 25 feet away from that intersection. So, I'd ask the board to entertain an additional condition that in the event that that road is constructed, that the driveway be relocated, or it could be relocated now, but...
Did you understand that, Ed?
Because we don't know what the status of Clay Street's going to be at this point,
right? I know there's been a lot of discussion on moving those roads around.
Correct. The A and R plan that was created leaves that right-of-way intact.
Okay.
And it's outside of the lot's boundaries right now. Still on property owned by Richmond Company, which is the applicant.
What about, yeah, I'd say, is this one of your?
It is not.
No, there's a, there's a whole other thing about realigning the driveway versus the road.
Just checking.
Any other questions, John, on Richmond Gray Point, 42 Skyline?
Thank you.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Checking.
The secondary, I mean, the secondary dwelling with Andrew's amendment to that condition.
Right, that should Clay be constructed, that the driveway would be relocated at that time.
Yeah.
To conform to zoning.
To conform to zoning. Is there a second to that, John? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And now we have Ben and Melanie Barnes, 44 Main Street in Wisconsin. Anything to add, Andrew?
No.
Any questions, John, Wisconsin?
Make a motion to approve the staff recommendations.
Okay. Nat's made a motion to approve through, per staff recommendation. Is there a second?
Second.
John's made a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Previous plans, Andrew. Pippin's Way?
These are legal documents. We recommend that the board vote to endorse.
This has been going on for some time, so this is part of the whole process? Legal process?
I'll make a motion to approve the legal documents.
On Pippin's Way?
Yep.
John, do you have any questions about Pippin's Way?
Uh, yes.
I'll hold your motion for a second.
I was a little confused on it. Was it, is it just the road itself going in? Any changes in the road? No?
No.
Not this time.
Okay. I just, this is all strictly legal documents. Thank you.
You want to second Nat's motion now?
Yes.
Okay. There's made a motion, made and seconded to approve the endorsement of Pippin's Way, 12 Gardner Road. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And we have South Valley Industrial Park, MCD. Andrew, you want to explain that one?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair. There was an earlier approval of the entire, at the time, the LeWacki holding the South Valley Industrial Park, which included a number of properties there. That was approved by the board back in August of 1995. As part of that, a number of special permits were actually granted on various lots for fabrication, for numerous industrial, commercial-type activities in the lot. So, the proposal that came forward was for building that conformed with the relief that the board already granted. So, when these situations come up, the board generally looks at the site plan and makes sure that they're comfortable with it, and determines that whether or not a public hearing is needed. Since the uses were already covered by our earlier approval, it's my opinion that public hearing is not needed. Site plan review is needed by the board, and again, I found the site plan to be in conformance with our standards for that area, so...
And I believe the alternates are on this?
This is a special permit, yes.
So this is a house cleaning issue, Andrew?
Yes.
Well, it's cleaning up a bunch of stuff that's been going on.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
No.
Do you guys have any questions down there? John, do you have any questions? Okay.
Oh, this is, this is a public hearing.
No, it's not a public hearing.
No. So, I would ask the board to find that it does not require reopening of the public hearing, and to approve the site plan as submitted.
Two separate votes, two separate votes. Andrew?
You can make one motion.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Nat's made a motion to, that it doesn't require reopening the public hearing. And what was the last half of it, Andrew?
And that you approve the site plan as submitted.
Approve the site plan. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Marklinger seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That was unanimous. Alright, now we will return to Faros, 17 Broad Street LLC. Representing the applicant?
Notes?
I didn't need my notes.
Sir? I was waiting, just making sure you were ready. Sarah, I'll just for the applicant. Since we were last before you, we've continued to work with the abutters, with the planning board staff, HTC and others, to try to address all of the concerns relevant to the planning board issues. Just to refresh your recollection, we relocated the historic structure to the corner of North Water Street to kind of preserve its historic character and keep it open to public view. We've moved it back an additional two to three feet from where it was at the last meeting. When I say back, back from North Water Street, west, up Broad Street, just a little bit, to provide a bigger landscape buffer along North Water Street. We eliminated the parking that we had shown along that westerly boundary line. We submitted an alternative plan that has one parking space, in case the board wanted to see one parking space on the site, but my sense, from talking with everyone, is that parking in town is being eliminated, and that as such, we should eliminate the parking here as well. So, I would prefer that we go forward just with this plan. We've reduced the room count overall from our original proposal, from 30 rooms to 25. All of the rooms are double occupancy rooms. We've increased the green space to the point where we now meet the 30% open space requirement under the MCD guidelines. As you'll recall, we had that sort of interesting dichotomy between zoning, which allows up to 75% ground cover, but the MCD guidelines require 30% open space, so now we're meeting that 30% open space. We've submitted a management plan, based on some other management plans that have been approved in other projects in the past. We, I think at the last meeting, provided a streetscape to show that the building is in scale and keeping with its surroundings. I think there might have been a question that was raised about how accurate that was, and it's, it's very accurate. It's based on the GIS, and short of doing an instrument survey of every property in downtown, it's as accurate as we can get it. There was a question that was raised, and we brought it forward at the HTC meeting last week. We had an opportunity to have a roof deck and the connector piece between the old structure and the new structure. We understand that that's raised a lot of concern, so we're more than happy to say that we're not proposing any access to that area. We will put potentially some condensers or other air conditioning units up there, but, but no use by, I think it was available only to one room, but we'll eliminate that, just so there's no question about that. The massing, I think, height and intensity are all things that we're continuing to address at the HTC, and I, I guess my feeling is that we should address all of the planning concerns, and then just continue at the HTC with our architectural plans. I think that's the purview for the, kind of, those issues to be addressed. So, I think we're, I think we've given you everything that you've asked us for, and I'm hoping that we're at a point where we can, we can close. That seemed to be the indication from the staff report, and I'm certainly happy to answer any questions. My clients are also here again tonight, as is Paul Santos, our project engineer, and Matt McCaker, our project architect.
Thank you. Just something for you to consider before the rest of your team speaks, is that it might be more prudent to keep it open until April, because then the HTC will be hopefully done by then. That way, if one group or another does something that the other one doesn't agree with, you're not ping-ponging back and forth between the two. So I think it's only going to take one more meeting, but I think it might be more prudent for you and your clients to hear, I know there are people here to speak this evening, quite a lot of them, and I think it might be better for you to think about that, have that discussion while we're talking.
Okay.
And I think if we close the public hearing and something happens at the HTC, it could be a big problem for you.
In what way? I guess I'm wondering, in what way? As long as we're still meeting the 30% open space, and we're, and our room count is staying at the 25, in what way do we run into a problem?
You don't know what the HTC is going to do.
No, I don't, but...
I don't, and I'm the chairman. Just saying. So just, you know, think about that.
Anybody else on the board?
Carl?
I had two quick questions, Sarah. Have you put the handicap lift in the front on Broad Street, or is it on the side on North Water Street?
At the moment, it's at the side on North Water Street, but we are in discussions with Tom Hopkins at the AAB, and ultimately, that decision will kind of be his to make, I think.
And the other question I had for you was, you had, in our packet, we have two different schematics, two elevations. Are you going with number two, that's the more Victorian style, before the HTC? Are you going with a more conventional shingled ending?
Here, here's where we are with the HTC. We have now come to the point, and I don't know if you want to put up the board that chose it, Paul, the elevation. The idea with the discussions that we've had with the HTC is that to kind of tell the historical story of the building, the preservationists tell us, and we're trying to follow what they say, that we should try to show the evolution of the building, and that we shouldn't attempt to copy in our addition the elements of the original, and that by changing the style of architecture, it clearly differentiates between the old structure and the new. So, we're going with what is, with a design sort of like what's shown here. This isn't current with all the HTC most recent changes, but would be the historic structure up on North Water Street, and then the structure with the mansard roof, sort of the Victorian on the west.
Thank you.
Joe?
Yeah. Are you going to need special, oh, sorry. Are you going to need any special permits for setback?
No. We need all the setbacks, because we have a zero side and front setback, and a three-foot rear setback.
Oh, only three in the back? I didn't know.
Yeah.
And, and the building height, are you tight for that, or is it, do you have?
We're asking for a special permit on height. The height of the new structure is at, Paul, 38, 30? We came down from where we started.
The only reason, I don't care about the number. The only reason I was asking is because on Chestnut Street, there was, there was a problem between what?
Right.
You know, I just was saying.
Yes.
To avoid that situation.
Yeah, exactly. And we, and we have asked for that special permit, yeah.
That's right. Thanks.
John?
Yeah, I had a comment. I agree with another letter. I agree with that, and I think the structure itself should not be separated in two different types. I said it before, and I think that should stand strong, where the planning board does have the ability to make comments into how it does, and I think the building itself at 42 feet is over the 30-foot limit by 14 feet, and I find that the, it's overpowering for the structure. No matter what's next to it or behind it, it is overpowering for it in itself. You should go with it, I think you should go with the old, the first submission, which matches the Greek Revival on the front, and it matches together.
Okay.
For the neighborhood. No matter what, what is next door, which is a restaurant, I mean, the rooming house that Ned's been in, I know that's a Victorian style too, but I say, you don't mix two with one. And if I can't find another one in Nantucket, I like it. Thank you.
You want Matt to tell, put it on the record, what the dimensions are, because it's not 42 feet?
Sure.
I'm sorry, can we repeat that?
It's not 42 feet, but Matt knows what it is.
He's talking about the overall height.
Height.
He's talking about height of 42.
Talking about height.
Yes, it's not...
Go to the thing.
It's, it's not 42 feet. It's actually, in the previous incarnation at the HTC on the high side, I think we're at like 33.6, and then the most recent incarnation around revisions to the HTC, there was actually a request to raise it, to make the roof a bit more proportion, proportional to the wall space, so I think it comes out around 36, 36 feet tall, above grade at the high side.
I have a comment. I measured it last night at the HTC meeting, and you measure over 42 feet? What scale? I have, I just seen, we have a 30-foot height limit, and I think this town should learn how to spell "no" a lot of times, because everybody wants something now, two months later, two months later, a year later, coming back. Everything changes. You know, it's a typical way, way to have things happen, but everything gets bent out of shape, and Nantucket's getting too big for its britches. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Yes, Sarah. Reading all the, alright. Reading the, the list up to 16 things we've got here. It's sort of a draft, draft, kinda, you know, which is good. Every one of those things we talked about. The, going back to the way things used to be in the past with these kind of projects, we haven't discussed this, but with the waiver of the parking, which is going to happen, which it should, comes a mitigation. How do you feel about maybe some sidewalk improvement costs?
Yes, that's absolutely fine.
I mean, you can talk to staff about what they think, about the number. I just want to get that on the, you know, in the decision, because that's what Barry would be asking for that, so, you know.
Right.
And as far as the building goes, I mean, you know, that's, you know, we've been moving buildings on Nantucket for over 100 years, okay? And the buildings next door are just as tall. And when we get into 30 feet downtown, it's kind of ridiculous to really talk about it. So, I think that, I don't have any issues with that. I think that the HTC is doing their part of that situation, and I'm not concerned with it, because I believe that the last plan, when we moved the existing building closer to the street, when it's shorter, I think that's, that was a really smart idea. So, I have no issues with that. Carl talked about the handicapped access. Did we take care of that little thing on North Water Street? For the, okay, the little curb thing, curbside? Didn't we talk about that?
We're doing that on Broad Street.
We're going to do that on Broad Street?
Yes.
Okay.
All access is from Broad.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, we don't think that North Waters, North Water Street is important for parking. It's also narrow.
The trash pile is going to end up there.
And when things turn, you know, we, we don't want a curb cut there. The trash, I think they'll do, as they do all the other guesthouses in the area, you know, the drill.
It's packed in the street at 6 o'clock in the morning, for the mail.
Right.
Okay. That's all I have. Madam Chairman?
Any other questions from the?
The board? We're going to open it to the public. This is a public hearing. Anybody who'd like to speak, please come up, identify yourself and where you live. I know there are people here to speak on this issue. Nobody wants to speak on this issue? Okay. That's a surprise.
We've, we've been talking, and I think we've resolved all the, those issues.
There was one individual here that I met this afternoon that lives on Ash Street.
Oh, I don't know. I don't know where he is.
Which, he was new to the table on this, and he was looking for information.
That was me, and that was a different process.
Okay.
Oh, that's right. You're concerned about the others. We do need an extension request.
Yeah. I did want to have an additional comment.
John's got one more question.
Additional comment. How much parking has to be waived for this structure? There's, there's, there's two parking already on the property.
Right, all, I mean, all of it. We had, let me look at the, it's 14 spaces. It's a waiver of 14 spaces under current zoning.
That, that's roughly about 96% of what you already have. And I, I myself know we have problems down in, you know, historic area, down in the center, in the core area, but I'm getting so, everybody wants waivers for parking for this, for that, even out of town, you want parking waivers. I'm not in favor. You're making your problem, the town's problem. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
I understand.
Okay, it's my turn.
It's a 100% waiver.
100% waiver. Andrew, there is a warrant article for this year's town meeting to change the parking requirements for downtown.
That's correct.
Would that be another reason why we should wait until after town meeting?
Not, in my opinion, because I think we'd have to wait until it had gone up to the Attorney General's office, and had been approved, and that could...
Actually, you know, you can proceed at your own risk, without waiting for Attorney General, but this is a big project.
Correct.
Alright, I've got just a couple of things to add about no summer construction. That would be an absolute disaster. That would have to be a condition.
Oh, absolutely, yes, absolutely.
Like May 15th through September 15th, or even October 1st?
I mean, I think the, the board had come up with a, with a standard, I think you had come up with a standard time period, which was June 27th.
Not for this.
That's at the ZBIA.
Oh, is that the ZBIA?
Yeah.
I thought Mrs. Howard had come up with one.
That was a Dreamland extension.
For the Dreamland, and that you had changed your policy. But, you know what? It doesn't matter. Whatever you think is reasonable, I know up the street, there is a, there's a construction exterior from Labor Day, Memorial Day to Labor Day.
That, this particular corner, because of that congestion, this is going to be a nightmare. You know, you've seen what happened with all this stupid sewer stuff going everywhere. You can't get anywhere from anywhere, and you certainly can't get there from here.
Right. I, I think, just the only thing I would add, is whatever you think is reasonable, but just bear in mind that you want the project to be, you don't want to truncate it so much that you can't get the project done.
Right.
In the season that you're given.
So something reasonable has to be crafted. Leslie?
Madam Chairman, the ZBIA just recently changed theirs, but I had forgotten that in connection with the Dreamland permit several years ago, the planning board talked about using a June twentieth or June twenty-first date through Labor Day, I believe. It was definitely later in the season.
Later in the season. I'm still concerned because of where it is. It's not on like some collateral street. It's right there. So I think it needs to be a little bit earlier, like maybe June first to September fifteenth. That gets you through the bulk of the summer. I don't think you guys are gonna be working over Memorial Day, anyway. Do we have to deal with security fencing in that location like we did with the Whalen Museum and the Dreamland? Yeah, so I think we gotta deal with that as an issue. I don't wanna see any parking on the site, and I agree with taking it out. I think the management plan is good. You've already gotten rid of the people congregating on that recessed flat between the two buildings. I'm still a little concerned about the bar issue. Someone brought up an interesting idea, because I, I don't drink, but I've been other places with people who do on vacation, and it's a BYO situation, and they provide the lounge, the bar area, the ice, the glasses, things like that, but they don't actually serve at the bar to the guests. So I don't know if anybody else is concerned about that, but I'm still concerned about the bar issue. I appreciate the restrictions you put on it, that it's for bar guests, and they can only be charged to the room. But I think another member who's not here this evening mentioned earlier in one of these hearings that they're worried about other people coming in from off the street, the room guest, the room person paying for their alcohol, you know what I'm saying? It can get a little squirrely if you're meeting other people at other guesthouses or friends that you have here, like a wedding-type thing.
Honestly, I think the area is small, the area in the hotel is small enough that this isn't gonna become a huge bar scene if somebody came by and had a drink with someone who is staying in the hotel.
Okay, 'cause that's still the one component of this, a little uncomfortable with it, given how many rooms and whatnot. But we all, for anybody who's in here on this matter, the planning board always reserves the right to reopen a public hearing if there is a problem after the first full season of operation. I don't wanna go and put a condition on it like we have in the past where you have to come back after a year to have another discussion about it.
Right.
Because that really hasn't worked out very well for the ZBA or the planning board. So I just think there's some other little things that we need to tighten up, particularly related to construction, Andrew. But I think the plan is taking great shape, and I will ask again one more time, anybody in the audience wanna speak to this? Nat has one more comment.
Just, just to sort of reset this date thing, there is no town bylaw for dates. There was a lot of misunderstanding during that, really, actually during the Point Breeze project, that there was this like magical date, and that's not true. It is something is set by the planning board for certain projects. The Dreamland was extended another week and a half, I believe, because they needed to get staging down, and they had the street, I mean, it just can't, sometimes things just can't happen exactly when you want. And that is for exterior construction, too. This is not the project itself. So just don't want anyone to think that we're like stopping them from working in the summertime. That is not true. So I don't think we need to come up with a hard date tonight, Sarah. I mean, that's my opinion. I think we need to, you know, you talk to staff before the next meeting. I mean, I'm fine with, you know, a few days before school gets out. That's when it really, summer really starts, when school is out. That's it.
We don't have any trouble with the September fifteenth to Memorial Day, June first.
Well, you're not the only person voting.
No, but I, just because of the word is and the...
I'm just saying, June fifteenth to September, you know, whenever the Memorial Day comes up this year.
Labor Day.
It's fine with me.
Yeah.
But whatever we decide on is fine. I'm just, just wanted to make sure everyone understood that. So do we have to get approval for the extension for the deadline? What are you gonna go to?
Madam Chair, could I suggest through you to April twenty-eighth?
Can I give you an extension to April twenty-eighth?
Yep.
Do you need a motion to that effect, Andrew?
Yes, please.
I'll make that motion.
Nat's made a motion to grant the extension for action and filing to, what was it, April twenty-eighth? Is there a second? That's 2014. In case anybody had any question about that. So there's been a motion made in, to April twenty-eighth, 2014. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. John?
And I'll make a motion to continue till that day, or till the next meeting.
Can we have a draft?
April fourteenth.
April fourteenth. Andrew, do you wanna run a draft on this with all the conditions?
We can, yeah.
You guys work it out?
Kind of a...
Should we have something to look at on the fourteenth and get it done?
Well, I think we'll have to, because you'll have to have the draft and sign it pretty close to the fourteenth and get it filed if you're gonna meet that April twenty-eighth deadline.
Okay.
Okay, great. Nat's made a motion to continue this matter to...
Before you continue, other than the things that we just talked about, are there any other things you want us to try to address between now and the meeting? Or is it mostly just working out these few issues with staff?
I think you need to identify where the trash is going and how it's being contained. I'm not sure we've gotten that far.
We do have a place on the plan.
In the back, I assume?
Yeah. It's right there.
Access from North Water, backside.
Okay. Anything else? AC units you're gonna put up on the roof?
We have some on the ground, and we'll have some up on the roof.
Okay. Anything else anybody wants to see? Carl?
I just wanted to make a quick comment that I, I think that that sketch plan right there is a very attractive building. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All righty. Nat's made a motion, and it was seconded. All those in favor to continue to April fourteenth and have a draft prepared, Andrew, for review prior to that in our packets? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Another painful impact.
We are now on to zero four one four WJG Realty Company LLC, twenty-one and thirty-one Sparks Avenue, forty-seven Sparks Avenue, fifty-one Sparks Avenue, otherwise known as the Stop and Shop. Representing the applicant?
Sarah Alger, representing the applicant. And I have with me Mike McNeese, the project engineer, Bill O'Brien, Deb Farr...
Randy Hart.
Oh, right. Randy Hart is who's our traffic guy. Since the last meeting, we have made a number of revisions to the plan. We've met with the Butters staff and others interested in the project. We've gotten some informal feedback from the HDC, and we have some changes that are gonna be reflected in this plan that are before you. And I'm just gonna run through them really quickly, and then I'll let Mike show you them and his slide. On Lower Pleasant Street, we widened the sidewalk from about five feet to eight feet. On Sparks Avenue, we eliminated the sidewalk on the north side of the road, on our side of the road. And we're gonna focus rebuilding and doing improvements to the sidewalk on the south side. The aisle widths have gone from twenty-six feet to twenty-four feet. So that relief that we had requested is no longer necessary. The parking stall length has gone from eighteen feet to twenty feet, which is what's required under the bylaw, so that relief is no longer necessary. Mike has, I think, a truck access and circulation template he's gonna show you to show how that loading area will function. The parking spaces, people had asked me questions about parking, so I just wanted to kind of run through what the parking scenario is. Currently on site, we provide a hundred and forty-nine parking spaces. For the bulk of the renovation, while we have just a partial store operating with the revised parking area, we'll have a hundred and six parking spaces. Those parking spaces meet the requirement of the bylaw for the store that will then be in place. There is a brief period of time where we have less than a hundred and six spaces, but that's a really kind of shortened window. And finally, when the store opens, we'll have a hundred and ninety spaces, which meets the calculations that Mike has come up with that are on the plan. And I think those are all, all of the changes. And so I guess Randy, if you could go through the truck circulation issue?
Sure. Good evening. Randy Hart with Van Ness hanging in Brussels and VHB. I'm the traffic engineer of record on the project. Is that better? Okay. At the last hearing, there were certainly questions regarding the truck template and how vehicles will get into and out of the proposed facility. And while we had them in the slides, there were some technical difficulties. We weren't able to show them. The templates that I'm gonna show you tonight were included in the original submission. They are in the appendix of the traffic report, so if you wanna look at a more detailed version, you're certainly able to do so. I can point that out where it is if you need me to. But generally speaking, access via trucks will be, tractor-trailers will be along Sparks Avenue in an east or westerly direction, as you could see here. Trucks will be able to, excuse me, make a right-hand turn, and this intersection has been designed to accommodate that movement. You'll see there's a big triangular island in the center of the driveway that is Belgian block, which is, only has a slight reveal above the highway, or above the roadway system. And what that's intended to do is to provide channelization for motor vehicles as they enter and exit, but allow the rear wheels of trucks to travel over it. You can see the path allows that movement to occur. Basically, a truck comes in, will pull down into the aisle slightly, and then back into its position. And on the egress, Mike, next one, from that position, he can make one turn and remove, basically leave the site in the same direction that they came. And that can happen from either loading dock positions. There are two loading docks proposed as part of this proposal. One other thing that's being suggested here is that Stop and Shop will implement protocols in terms of delivery to the facility. And by that, there will be an attendant that will know when the truck is arriving. He will be in the parking lot awaiting the truck arrival, and he will help the truck get into position, and basically another set of eyes that can help minimize any conflicts between pedestrians and/or motor vehicles. But this design, as it's being shown, is designed to accommodate that movement fairly easily, and we expect the trucks to get into position very quickly under this plan. I did believe that Deb had mentioned at the last meeting that the current truck activity to the site, tractor-trailers that is, is two to three tractor-trailers during non-peak season conditions, and then three to four under normal peak season conditions, with five occasionally entering and exiting the site. We anticipate that will remain similar in the future. There may be a possibility to reduce it with additional storage on site, but we're not sure on that. We just don't think it's gonna increase, but, so the levels will be exactly what they are today, or possibly even less. Thank you.
I guess the only other thing I wanted to add is that we had had our own traffic study done, and we're waiting for the town's peer review. I think you have someone now under contract to do that, and hopefully we'll have comments and be able to respond to them before the next meeting.
Do you have anybody else who wants to speak for you?
No, I don't think, I think we've said, happy to answer any questions.
Nat? Jay Nager?
Madam Chair, just through you. Sarah, it looks like the, to the, I guess the right side has been altered a little bit. Is that in the brick walkway leading down to the upper corner? Is that where the liquor store is proposed?
Yes.
It is? Okay.
Yes.
Right there. Thank you.
Yeah, we're accommodating Antucket wine and spirits in that location of the store.
Okay.
Okay. Just a couple of things to touch on from the last meeting. Something I didn't mention, because I know there's gonna be a lot of people talking here in a short bit. When the trucks pull out of the back of the current store, you cannot see a thing looking to your left. I mean, you can't see when you've got a car, so you can't see with a truck either, and it's really difficult. And we've never had an accident that I know of there. That's probably the most dangerous thing that's been happening for twenty-five years. So when we start talking about an accident waiting for a place to happen, or this is the worst idea I've ever seen in my life, blah, 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 well, we've already had the worst thing possible going on for twenty-five years already. Nothing is perfect, okay? And change is a, you know, gets people on edge and stuff like that, and that's just, you know, that's normal. But when we look at these plans for these projects, and obviously this is a large-scale project, but there's always going to be opposition to something, okay? I personally, I know that the truck will work to back in there. It looks like it won't, but it will. It will be, the trucks will be able to pull out and turn and go back to the roundabout. So at least we won't have truck going up Pleasant Street. The only thing that I have right now, Sarah, on something different is the, is the three entrances. Have we absolutely decided on that? I mean, has it been any feedback in the last month about, you know, drinking coffee area versus just saying, you know what, we need to have another entrance? Because I mean, I'm not a hundred percent convinced that that's something that we should do. I think we can have a place to congregate without blocking an entrance. I mean, are we, you know, either way is fine, but I'm just saying, have we absolutely decided on this?
No.
I'm just, you know...
We think that this plan works, and we think it works well, and we like providing that open space in that area. The current parking lot only had one opening for a long time...
Right.
Until we just recently opened up that, that second entrance.
Well, it's only had two total.
It's had...
Until that, until that, really.
Correct.
So we're gonna have three to this one, so technically we're adding one.
Right, so we eventually added one.
And plus, we will have the exit to Geronimo's side, so that's technically a half.
That will be another.
What about all the different, has anything changed with the staging stuff since the last meeting? We had a lot of different ideas and...
No, we're still staging at the Craig property, temporary parking down there for employees during the construction phase. We're not proposing customer parking down there. We don't believe that we need it. We think we meet the parking requirements for the building of the size that we're gonna have during the construction, so...
Okay. Have we gotten any more solid on the cutting through agreement?
No.
But it's likely, it's likely to have.
Still working on it.
Okay. Okay.
Anything else?
Wait for now.
I have some comments. One, I find the traffic, that should be open only for one reason, to have the cars here, or here, or here trying to get out. And the guy parked up in there, he'll never get out of there in the summertime. We need another access on the other road, I think. And I've driven these trucks for the first national years ago. In the late of them, if they eliminated these pockets right here, get rid of this, let that truck come down here, oh, they're fifty-four feet long. You swing in here, you can eliminate this, you can start it turning here, it'll be a lot easier instead of waiting for cars here to back up. I think that should be looked into as far as that one corner lot there, that corner parking. I, it's hard to, for me to sit here and say, I, I, I waiver on parking. I don't care for a lot of it, and I, what is the actual amount that is required by law, Mr. Willis?
When are you asking to be waived for the new store?
We're not asking for any to be waived. We're providing the parking that needs to be provided. We're providing a hundred and ninety spaces.
You're providing eleven...
Which according to the calculations that Mr. McNeese has shown on his plans is what is provided, not counting the areas that aren't, that are, that are ancillary storage that aren't counted towards the parking.
How many do you have now?
We have currently a hundred and forty-nine parking spaces.
Okay, how many required for now? A hundred and forty-nine? Or was there a recent waive?
Oh, there was a waiver, I think, for the existing store.
You don't know?
I don't have, I don't have that figure now.
Mr. Lewis, can you elaborate on that? Was there waivers on this project when it started? I don't-
I, I don't have that information, John. If you want that in advance, we can bring it to the next meeting, but you need requests like that.
I was curious what the, if they get any waivers when they built this and put this in, or how many is going to require for this larger place, per square footage, per car and all that? I'd like to see a report on that if possible. Thank you. My question here is, right here on this corner, this is the corner of the building, I take it. What is your height on that, please? Up to the, up to the fascia?
Up to the fascia?
Where's the engineers?
He's, he's answering the question. He's coming up.
Half the building-
It's 15 feet.
16 feet?
To the fascia is 15 feet.
Yeah, right to the gutter line, yeah.
Yeah.
It's not going to help the fire department, but anyway, I've heard that comment made. I'm just elaborating it a little bit. It might, it might be true, but thank you.
Can, can Mr. Hart just respond to that?
Because I'm going to have a whole lot more-
Yeah. In the last couple of minutes, there's been a lot of questions about site distance, and I just want to address all of them because it's something that we have to look at, and we have looked at, not only for our site, but next door. Sorry. People don't usually have a hard time hearing me. We let that site distance for all of the site driveways. And I want to make a correction, because there are five points of access to the site today. There will be three under the proposed condition. So yes, we are consolidating the number of access points. At each of the three access points, that will remain, we've performed formalized site distance evaluation and demonstrated that we not only meet, but exceed the minimum requirements at this location. At the last hearing, there were comments relative to the building and what we're doing on-site, and how that will relate to site distance for the fire department. So we've gone out and we've checked that as well, and I've provided a supplemental memorandum, which I believe we submitted probably three weeks ago at this point. And within that memorandum, it demonstrates that the minimum requirements that are necessary are met. And that doesn't take into account the fact that the fire, you know, when there's a fire call or something, there's a siren, there's a light, all of which would add to the visibility and the awareness of people traveling in that area. So we may or exceed all the requirements for site distance on-site and adjacent to the firehouse as well.
One other, one other comment, Madam Chairperson. Did we, Mr. Lewis, have we received a letter from the fire chief on it yet? He was going to give a recommendation.
We've received an email from him, and he is satisfied.
All right, okay. I didn't get a copy in the package at all. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I just wanted to weigh in on the, the trucks one more time, has come up again. And that, that plan will work. I'd like to keep the, the green space there, and I'd like to keep six parking places and not eliminate them. And these people are, who operate these vehicles are professionals, and they drive them every day, and they're used to getting in and out of tight spots. And you don't show the connector to the, the condominium complex and the car wash and everything? That hasn't been worked out? Is that why it's not on there?
Correct, because we haven't worked it out yet.
So that could be potentially exchanging a fourth, a fourth egress and so forth.
That's correct. It would eat up, I think, two, two parking spaces, five parking spaces? Five parking spaces.
Is there a time in the next few weeks or months where we're going to get elevations for this? I believe they were asked for at the last meeting, or is that coming eventually?
Those are coming. We'll, we'll have them for the next meeting. We're still working through the design.
Okay, thank you.
Joe?
Yeah, a couple of things. I, you know, I'm going to defend VHB a little bit. They're noted for their traffic engineering. There's, I've got pretty good confidence in what they're putting forth here. Like off Island where I was for 25 years, they would be the ones we would try to use when we could. The only thing, the question, only question I have is, how much did you look at having a cellar instead of going up that's, or a basement that-
We've, we've looked at it. It's not completely off the table at this point, but it's pretty close to off the table, right, because of cost concerns. So that's, that's the story.
That's all you have.
I'm going to bring up the basement again. It's, from a multiple points of view, it's hamstringing the design of the structure. So they're going to be talking about the basement again, I know that. I'm still having trouble. I understand that from VHB's point of view, it meets all this stuff from a technical point of view. From a practical point of view, and how nutso it gets here for three or four months of the year, it does not work for some reasons. I mean, it's great if you have traffic, you have enough time to come in and out down here with those trucks, and you've got to wait for somebody not to be coming in or out. And that just doesn't happen until maybe 1:00 in the morning on August 1st. So if the truck is stuck out on Sparks Avenue trying to make that sharp turn, which means it has to come into the coming-out lane, which you've got on the left side there, that's never going to happen. Because then what's going to happen is that traffic is going to get stopped coming out from the worst intersection on the planet by the high school, and they're going to get stuck behind the truck coming from the little rotary, trying to wait for the truck to come in, and then you're going to have chaos in the parking lot, as there always is all summer long, especially at 4:00 on a Friday. And you're not going to be able to pull in that lane and block all those people to back up. My problem is, and it has been all along, because I also used to drive trucks, you've got four of us here that's driven trucks, and you're mixing the public too close together with the trucks. I think that's my biggest problem. Because the trucks don't, right now, the trucks have their own entrance and exit, basically. I use the back of the Stop &amp; Shop as a cut-through. But those trucks never mingle with the public. They never pull down a lane and back in right across the main thoroughfare in front of the Stop &amp;, this proposal, and it doesn't block the traffic going in and out, trying to wait for somebody to stop coming out that exit so you can swing the truck in. We just don't have those lull periods at that Stop &amp; Shop, especially when you're tied up with the freight boats. Because on the mainland, you can come at 4:00 in the morning and unload, which is what they do, or very late at night. You don't have that here. I don't know, Nat, you know the freight boat schedule than I do. It's all day long, let's face it. Right now, the trucks are coming and going and coming and going because they can't stack them all back there. So we don't have the ability to come at 4:00 or 5:00 in the morning when there isn't anybody in that parking lot. They're going to be coming when there's a billion people in there for three or four months of the year, and you're going to try to drive through a lane, block people in, try to back up, try to get off of Sparks Avenue without backing up traffic all the way through the airport rotary. So this has been my problem all along, is the mingling of the loading zone with the public access and the public aisles and the public parking. And it's a safety issue for me, and they know it, I've said it all along, this, this loading zone area of the whole complex, which can be worked with and massaged from an HDC and a planning board perspective. That piece on Sparks Avenue has been my problem from the very beginning, when this started to get discussed. And the angled thing is never going to happen from an HDC perspective. So I don't know what you can do, because it, great on paper, great from an engineering point of view, but from an actual use and practical use point of view, for at least three or four months of the year, that's going to be a nightmare. So I, I don't know where to go from here. I don't know why you have the little triangle there, because that makes it more difficult to turn left. And people are not going to be just turning right, coming out of that and going west. They're going to be coming out and going back towards the rotaries or down Hooper Farm Road. So I think there's a lot of great stuff on paper, but from a practical point of view, I think there's some issues, and I'm sure you're going to hear it from out there, so.
Can I offer just a couple of comments? I may not be able to satisfy all your concerns, but we have thought this through, and we, we do this a lot.
Don't say you do it on the mainland.
Yeah, we do it everywhere.
What can you do with here?
We do it everywhere, and there are guidelines, and there are requirements, and then there are practical judgment involved. The one thing that I didn't mention, I probably should have, is that the program that's used to demonstrate the wheel movements of the vehicles is an extremely conservative program. We've proved it time and time again. And when we see what we're seeing in front of us, we know that trucks can maneuver much more tightly than what's being shown on the plan. So there's a level of confidence that you might not be aware of, but we are, because we, we've done this and we've proven in the field that it does work. And, you know, I can assure you, if I put a plan forward and the truck couldn't make the maneuver, I wouldn't be working for Stop &amp; Shop. And I've been working for them for 20 years, so we know what they need to operate.
I didn't say they couldn't. They couldn't technically do it.
Sure.
And that's my point. I know you can do it. I know the wheelbase, the split axles, I know you can do it.
Right.
But it's just from a practical point of view, they, it's way too mingled with the public and the public access.
Understood. And, and again, as I mentioned, there will be protocols established, there will be an attendant every time a tractor-trailer enters the site, okay? And that person will be responsible for minimizing the mixing that you're concerned with, and we're concerned with as well. And we agree that there will be some, but we want to minimize it and provide what we can to, to offset that. The other thing to keep in mind, and this is a difficult thing, but something that we're working towards, is that we can somewhat control when deliveries occur, not completely, because it's relative to the steamship schedules and the availability on, on the ships as well. But to the extent we can control when they come, we want them to come during off-peak periods, particularly in the morning when traffic activity is fairly light here, to the extent we can make that happen. And then we want them to leave during times when it's light as well. Now, that's not always going to happen, but to the extent practical, we're going to make it happen and try to implement good management of truck activities to, to help the situation again. So those are a few of the thoughts and the process that we've gone through to get to where we are. We understand your concerns, we share them to some degree, and we're trying to devise ways to offset them.
I'm going to be, remain concerned, just so you know. I think a lot of the other issues that are going to arise from this structure are really going to be coming through the HDC. So to me, and I think there's great parking, especially if you get the access from the neighboring property, I'm still concerned about line of sight. So I think there's going to be some massaging of the building that's going to probably help that on both the, the ramp coming out on the north side of the fire department and the ramp coming out on the south side of the fire department, where the brush breaker and all that stuff comes out, the south side.
Can I offer you one level of assurance on that? As we've already suggested tonight, there is a peer consultant that's going to be reviewing all the technical information that we provided. So if they have any issue whatsoever with any of the site distance calculations, assumptions that we made, we're going to know, and to the extent we have to modify something to address that, we will. But I'm not sure that they're going to see it much differently than we do, and I hope that will be the case.
Well, just one word of caution. I used to be on an ambulance rig for 10 years, and I know when you come out, you come out.
Sure.
And a car coming down the road is, is fine. There's, I think there's more than enough line of sight for a regular vehicle, but when you're dealing with emergency vehicles, and they're coming out, and your car doesn't see them come out until they actually get on top of the vehicles coming out, because right now, you can see them both, from both directions very clearly. But if you put a big structure that close to the street, right next to emergency ramps north and south on that fire department, I think there's going to be a problem. We don't have lights, and we don't have the flashing things telling you there's an emergency vehicle coming out, because everybody'd have a conniption if they saw a flashing light here. So that's stuff to be considered. But otherwise, that's really my main, main problem. This is a public hearing. Any other comments from the board members before we go? Carl?
This is for the consultant, sir. You may be able to tweak your scheduling with your arrivals with the, with the steamship authority to do more in the morning. You're probably aware of that. There's, there's earlier freighters, so on and so forth. I don't know if that would help you on Saturday and Sunday. It may help you during the week in July and August, but you might be able to work with the Truck Reservations Bureau on that. The other comment that I wanted to make on the record is, there was some comments in one of these public hearings about the traffic and the speed on Sparks Avenue, and I thought about this some more in the ensuing month between these meetings. And it's posted 25 miles an hour near the Seagrill for that zone, and Prospect Street has posted 20, and there's other, Washington Street has 20 mile an hour sections. There's a possibility that, that, you know, we could petition the selectmen or maybe through the planning board, whoever has the authority to, to reduce that speed limit from 25 to 20 from the Elm Tree down to the Sparks Avenue roundabout. I think that might be something to think about. Some people have brought that up for safety reasons, with the kids going down to Cumwin Farms and so on. I would venture to say that it might be worth thinking about reducing that speed limit from 25 to 20 in that zone. And it's true, it's going to, it's going to impact the Mid Island, and I think Pleasant Street and, and Pleasant Street has a 30 mile an hour sign near the office products. I think Pleasant Street might want to be down, brought down to 20 as well. I've experienced many speeding vehicles on both those streets, much to my chagrin, and we ought to think about that on this board, and we ought to think about it with the selectmen, and lower those speed limits to 20 on Pleasant Street and Sparks Avenue. Thank you.
Mike may be able to address this, but I was, when I was on traffic safety all those years, reducing speed limits below state 30 are not enforceable. Because they tried to do that in Wisconsin for years, 20's enough, you see those bumper stickers, 20's enough in Wisconsin, like there's some other alien being out there. But it was, I was told by, at the time when we were talking about reducing speed limits on Pleasant and Sparks, that they couldn't enforce it. They can put it up there, and it looks pretty on a sign, but you can't give them a ticket.
Well, I was told by Sergeant Ellis of the state police that you cannot enforce anything below 30. You can have 30 everywhere except a school zone.
Yeah.
So we're kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place, but I am concerned, I'm a concerned citizen as well as a board member here, that the, the kids going down to Cumwin Farms and the, and the traffic for Stop &amp; Shop, and it would be nice to at least suggest it, because there are a number of signs up for 20 miles an hour. In zones, it could be 30 miles an hour, so. I don't know if it's a waste of time or not, but I can't, I can't make that decision. But if we could drop it to 20, that'd be great, or people would kind of look at the sign and say, let's drive a little slower. I don't know. You're only going to the ocean any direction you go, so you're really not going any further than me, so.
I just want to add one thing before you open it to the public, and this may be kind of being too simplistic, but, you know, we are on an island. We have just so many people who can shop at a supermarket on any given day. If we were talking about pristine land here that had never been used as a supermarket, I think a lot of the concerns here would take on a lot more validity. But there's already a supermarket in this spot. Yes, this store is going to be slightly larger, but it's not as if we're going to be drawing people from neighboring towns, or, you know, people aren't suddenly going to be saying, let's drive over to Mid Island because there's a bigger Stop &amp; Shop. It's the same group of people, hopefully, shopping in a, in a much nicer shopping environment, and hopefully, taking some of the traffic off of the road in a more efficient way, and parking in the larger parking area. So I just, I think we tend to lose sight of the fact that this is an existing use that we're modifying and not a new use that we're introducing to the area.
Thank you. Before I open it up to the public, I just want to make note, because I see some people might have come in after the fact, we've already done all the A&amp;Rs. If you're here for an A&R, it's already been approved. We've done the two secondary dwellings, and we've done the previous plan. So if anybody's here for any of that, you don't have to stay. Then we're going to open it to the public. Anybody'd like to come down and talk? Go ahead, line up over there.
Hi, Liz McIsaac, 18 Sparks Ave. I've spoken before. Thank you for addressing some of our issues that we discussed at the last meeting. I have absolutely no problem with Stop &amp; Shop amending their plans on expanding the size of their building. That's not what the issue is. And absolutely, I understand that there's- And absolutely, I understand that their trucks will be capable of making that turn into the parking lot. My brother's a CDL hazmat driver, and has been for over 30 years, and he can absolutely make that turn with his blindfolded, and he's a professional, that's what he does. The issue that I see, which I need to really try to help you understand, is that what we have as business owners and tenants on this side of Sparks Avenue is that we don't have a parallel road, we don't have crossroads. We do get landlocked, where on Pleasant Street, or Lower Pleasant Street, if you will, you do have crossstreets, and you do have a parallel road, you have orange. It's really hard for us in the summertime to get in and out of our businesses or even our homes. And what tends to happen with even overflow, even with Stop &amp; Shop, other businesses, is people utilize our parking lot for parking. This happens also with the fire department. That's why you have cones up. You'll see it in there, right, and they have to put up cones so downy flight people won't park in their parking lot. It's not unusual for us to have people bring their shopping over to our parking lot and leave their carts in our parking lot. So what happens to us in the summertime is different to what happens to people on the mainland in the summertime. I do appreciate what you do, and yes, I do understand that you're absolutely right. These plans do work, and they are effective on the mainland. My brother-in-law's been working for Stop &amp; Shop for 38 years. I see it, it does work, but we are in a unique situation. In fact, several years ago, there was talk about proposing that people would be limited to bringing how many cars over to Nantucket because the island's just not big enough. We couldn't handle the traffic. So that just goes to show you that there's nothing new with this proposal. Stop &amp; Shop is there, it's not going anywhere. But the problem is, the population has grown significantly, and the traffic is just, there's more vehicles on the island. So what do we do about that? We need to look at, and the alternative is all that we're asking you. Why are we so adamant to utilizing just Sparks Avenue? Why can we no longer use Lower Pleasant Street as an entrance or egress? I don't understand that. It's just this, we feel that there's not an alternative for us at this point. But also concerns me now that you bring up this potential approval for the project on Broad Street, the Fowles Project. If that's gonna be happening, what's gonna happen to the trucks that are delivering to the downtown Stop &amp; Shop? Are they gonna then be diverted up Westchester and then have to come down Sparks Avenue? That's what is happening with the sewer project right now, is they're coming down Sparks Ave, then we're gonna be coming up Sparks Avenue. If that happens in the summertime, that's a nightmare. So if there is something that occurs in town, if you have some type of sewer water main break, do you understand what I'm talking about in that?
I do.
Okay. All right. I'm just saying, I'm just throwing that out there. I know that people say, "What's the big deal? Like, are you guys just like making things up? You're making a mountain out of a mohill?" I'm not. There are days where I cannot leave my driveway, nor can my clients or get into my driveway. That landlocks us, that landlocks Nantucket Auto Body, Cumberland Farms, the gas station, our business, as well as Flock. And you may think that's ridiculous, but we had a gentleman over there today who actually got a good visual of it, Representative Gary, got to see this firsthand, what it looks like. Unless you see it, and Madam Chairman, you did speak, you said a lot of what, you expressed a lot of our concerns, we don't have a crossstreet. We don't have an alternate route. People do have an alternate route if you're on Pleasant Street. We don't. If we get landlocked, we get landlocked, we don't get in or out. We have to wait until that rush of traffic goes. That's our main concern. Another big concern, which I still don't hear anybody discussing, what we're gonna do about the kids. Like, is there any discussion of, is there gonna be a bike path? Is there gonna be a walkway to protect these kids while this construction phase is being done? You know, I understand that there's a detail at the Boys and Girls Club, but that's a detail at the Boys and Girls Club. I know there's gonna be a monitor down here at Stop &amp; Shop, but let's face it, how many of these kids you see running willy-nilly, just all over the, they're all over the place? There's a staging process that's gonna be done. I'm just really concerned about that, with all the traffic that's gonna be taking place. And I don't know how you cut it, you see how it gets backed up past Vasos in the summertime, or with regard to the, you know, the Elm Tree traffic, that's a nightmare. I don't understand why there's such an aversion, why there's no talk about utilizing Lower Pleasant Street anymore. Why that's completely out of the picture. No one has answered me that. I don't understand that. Can anyone? Anyone? Right, but why are the trucks not able to come in that way and come out Sparks? Why isn't it one fluid motion?
Why did they do it all the time?
Why come in, turn around, and then go out in one area? And stall that? Why come in, back up, and go to the loading dock, and then come back out that area?
Because right now, right now, it does flow in behind the store from Pleasant Street, goes, parks, and then goes straight out and goes back towards the rotary. So it really just sort of keeps going, and that, I believe that's what you're asking, why doesn't it continue to do that?
Right. And I understand there's not gonna be a loading dock there, but to just come in and, or even come in Sparks and just go out Pleasant, as opposed, I don't know, it just seems kind of, yeah, I don't...
Tell you what, they don't wanna drive in front of the store, which would be very dangerous. That was one scenario a while ago. They don't wanna drive in front of the store, that was actually the scenario down on the Craig property when we produced that one, at one point, I believe. And I believe that's what your issues are, you don't wanna drive across the front of the store, but they don't really have the setback between them and the fire department to run that, up and down that side of the building.
And that was the only place that you could utilize a loading bay, is right there?
Well, it can't be in the front of the store, so you wanna respond?
Yeah.
Why not on the opposite side, or the side of the fire department? Where, that's...
Whose side?
Your side.
Okay.
Can I just offer a few comments? There's a balance here, and the balance is, is that we're trying to maximize the parking, because we know it's needed today, regardless of the expansion. So we're trying to maximize the parking, we're trying to do so and minimize the amount of conflicts between trucks and pedestrians and customer activity. And the only way you can do that, really, is to provide the concentration of truck movements in one place. That's the only way you do it. If you bring trucks in this way, while we certainly could do it, I'm sorry, this thing's cutting out on me. You could, we could design this to allow left turns in, but then that truck is then gonna be in conflict with all of these parked vehicles, all of these parked vehicles, while they try to get into position and then, you know, get out of the facility. And again, while we can do that, it doesn't seem to be a practical solution, given the balance that we're striving for, and that is to minimize the amount of conflicts that is possible. And the only way to do it, and gain the number of parking spaces that are really needed, is to concentrate loading to one side of the store.
Okay, I don't wanna waste a lot more time on that, because they've heard it from me, they've heard it from you...
Thank you.
And I think they're going to have to figure out how that whole little thing at the bottom is gonna work out, if it does change.
We have a lot of time with this problem.
Yeah, because I think, I think they've heard enough that they're gonna have to look at this and figure out if there's another way to do this. I was sort of into the in-and-out thing myself, but I'm not sure that that's gonna work for the unloading of the trucks, because they have to come in, what, 50 inches off the ground in order to back in level.
Can I just offer a quick comment, Ms. McIsaac? This is gonna be something new, but what if the trucks came out and turned right, went up to Sanford Road, turned right, went down Sanford Road, turned right onto Lower Pleasant, and back to the roundabout that way? Would that help you a little bit?
Yeah.
That would be less, that would be one half that wouldn't come via Sparks Avenue, would go around the block and back to Lower Pleasant Street, and back out to the main rotary, and back to the steamship.
That's private road.
That's a private road, okay, well, I'm just thinking out loud here, trying to help you out.
Just some alternative to keep that flow of traffic. Try to solve this right now. We know that there's enough of us concerned about this, that I think it has to be looked at, and I'm sure that's not the last time we're gonna hear it this evening. But I think it's, there's enough of a concern on the practical side versus the on-the-paper side, which does work. But we all live here, and we know what it's like in July and August, and it's a nightmare, frankly. In the middle of March, at 8 o'clock, at 9 o'clock at night, there's absolutely nobody over there. But you've got a really tense situation, whereas on the mainland, I brought this up before, on the mainland, it's year-round, it's spread out, those guys are usually open 24 hours a day. You don't have this all of a sudden dumping 50,000 people on this island for three or four months, and there's nowhere to go, anywhere. Last summer was a nightmare. Every intersection, you knew, you had to airlift into your own home. All right, anybody else would like to speak? Identify yourself and where you live.
Rocky Fox, I'm in the Chicken Box. So if anyone knows about how your parking lot's getting violated, I know. I don't think it's a Stop &amp; Shop. I don't. I shop there, I've worked there, I have friends who've worked there. But I do have a couple of questions. Actually, I have six questions. You said you have 139 spaces. Now, do employees park in those spaces on the day-to-day? Then that's, how many employees do you have on the day-to-day? So subtract those from your customers. So now your customers are parking in my lot. You said that during renovations, you have 106 spots. How many employees are you gonna have during renovations?
They're not gonna be parking in the parking lot.
All right, so you're telling me that they're still gonna have 106 spots during renovations to park, right? Is that what you said? Might I correct it? Might? All right. So how are the people who are working there gonna park?
Up the street.
And how are they getting to the Stop &amp; Shop? Or who are those working? Employees, the customers, whoever?
Also, you're walking.
Walking.
Okay, that's never gonna happen, we all know that. All right, so once it's all of a sudden done, it's gonna be 190 spaces, okay? Where are the employees gonna park? So once you increase your building, you increase your employees. More space means more employees, which means more employee size. Right or wrong?
Rocky, I understand that the calculation for the Stop &amp; Shop, the 190 that they're required to have...
Mm-hmm.
...that is based on also a certain amount for employees per big shift.
Okay, thank you, that wasn't...
It's not extra beyond 190.
That didn't come across when they said that.
These parking calculations, Rocky, are like post-World War II.
Okay, trust me, Chicken Box is goodness, it's 1947, I get it. There's one thing you said about you gotta dictate when the trucks can come, and how it works out. But if it's a day in the summer and the weather gets bad, and there hasn't been boats for two days, you cannot dictate when those trucks come. Cape Cod Fire is not going to the hood. The fifth shop is also moved down next to Cumberland Farms. I love Cumberland Farms, but I can't park them anymore, because the fifth shop, and I love the fifth shop, I give all my clothes there, but I can't find a spot there anymore. And this is February. I couldn't find a parking spot in the Chicken Box lot in December of Christmas Stroll. The guys from Calcaris passed the car not home, because they could not deliver my beverages, adult beverages, because there was too many people from the Stop &amp; Shop parked in the lot. I couldn't get my gas, couldn't get my food. I have to stand out there and tell some lady, like, "I can park here." She goes, "Are you customers? I own this lot." This is some defender. You know what I mean?
We all have the same problems, to get to your point.
My point is that I wanna work with these cats, but I hear what you're saying about the whole flow of it, but you cannot get in there, and you guys know, when you deliver in the summer, it's just, it's gonna be a nightmare. I love what you're saying, Carl, about creating the flow, and I get it. But I'm also a mirror stop, and I do that for the town. So if my people are there, they can't park in there, because Stop &amp; Shop people are there parking, and they know it all night, that upsets me. All right? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Who else would like to speak?
Victoria Waterhouse, 20 Sparks Avenue. Couple of things, you know, I've met with Greg a couple of times now, and we've been working out a lot of issues. But one of the issues that came up tonight was they wanted to put the sidewalk over on our side, which is the south side of Sparks Avenue, and increase the width from five feet to eight feet, which seems incredibly wide for a sidewalk. But how is that going to affect our properties, that construction, and widening into our yards? That's one question I have. One question I haven't been able to see on this plan yet is exactly where that entrance exit with the triangle thing, Madugur, is in relation to Cumberland Farms entrance and exit Mary Fee's driveway, and I know where our driveway is.
That's the Cumberland Farms.
Oh, so it's gonna remain the cluster, you know what, that it already is. Okay, okay.
It's gonna be mitigated, though. Because the way it is now...
What's your machine on?
I got it on. Let's just stop right there for a second, okay?
Okay.
When we approve the Stop &amp; Shop, when we approve...
Cumbes.
We didn't know it was gonna be Cumberland Farms at the time, okay? And if it was gonna be, I bet you the room would've been full, we all would've hated it, and Rocky would've had this love affair with Cumberland. But anyway, we got some complaints about the exit being across, but we knew that it was moving, okay? And we also knew that the traffic flow was gonna be improved. Now, the VHB guy, what is your first name again?
Randy.
Randy, sorry. Okay. Five entrances to the current one, okay, forget that. It really doesn't have five. I mean, the back counts, but nobody uses them for normal business, so it really only has two. So we knew that this was all changing a year ago, a year and a half ago when we approved that. You have to think ahead, okay? The fire station's not gonna be there five years, most likely. If we're, we're the planning board, we're supposed to think, okay? If we were the retreating board, then we would say, "All these things matter, but some of the stuff is changing." And everything in the Mid Island has changed in the last 10 years. A little at a time, things are getting improved. It can't all get improved by one application. We can't require, just because Stop &amp; Shop happens to be big, require them to fix the entire whole area.
Oh, no.
No, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
So, but the roundabout, people wanna take a right because it works. You don't wanna go to the school in the summer, because you can't get through the intersection. So the exit from Cumberland, taking a right, is actually easier, like, once people figure that out, okay? So I'm just saying that it's not gonna be as bad as it is now, because you're gonna have two other places for the cars that are gonna be coming out.
It's, you know, because I live two doors down.
I understand.
I work for Cumbes, you know, working there, I work their parking lot. I actually don't work for Cumbes, I work for the owners on Island Center.
Yeah.
And I see, and nothing against traffic over here, you guys are very intelligent, but when you put somebody from, and I don't wanna discriminate against anybody, but you put anybody from off-island on the road, they're not intelligent.
What do you mean, "on the road"? You mean, just driving?
Behind the wheel.
Okay.
They leave all their traffic smarts on the mainland.
Walkers, too, I'm not gonna leave them out. But anyway, that's the main concern, because I see what's going on now. Cumbes tried to do it efficiently, where they have an entrance by the gas station and an exit only. And I can't tell you how many times I've almost been run over, because somebody's coming in right past the "do not enter" sign. So that was a concern. One of my big concerns is what the elevation of the peak of the roof is gonna be by the loading dock and that corner by the fire station. When you look out my front windows right now, we can't see the hood of the last car parked over by Pleasant Street, behind the gas, behind the fire station. So what we're looking at now is, if you're gonna put a 30-foot building there, which undoubtedly is going to be, we are not gonna see any horizon out our front at all, we're gonna see shingles, okay? We're also, now, somebody told me the loading dock is gonna be covered, but in this illustration I'm looking at, right here, I'm looking at bare trucks, okay? So... So I've got a 30-foot building and trucks in my front yard. And sort of what Liz was saying, why did we decide to put all the traffic on Sparks Avenue? Why didn't we flip this plan, mirror image, over the other way and put the trucks over on Pleasant Street and the people over on Sparks Avenue? There's no residential people over on the Pleasant side, Pleasant Street side. It's all business. We've got residential homes people are living in over on Sparks Avenue. So why are we putting the trucks in our front yard? That was a huge, huge concern for us.
Hold on. Who wants to answer that one? Because that's come up several times, if there is an answer.
Well, ma'am, I would refer you to the 2007 Mid-Island Area Plan.
Oh, I know that, but they don't.
Well, I know, but you do know that. That plan was brought to town meeting, it was approved. It talked about creating Pleasant Street as the shopping street with wider sidewalks. That's exactly what's being done here.
On-street parking.
Correct. And this isn't, this is all a commercially-zoned area. It's commercial, since the adoption of zoning in 1975, it's not residentially-zoned.
I think they're also using some of the grade as a buffer, because the grade does go down towards Sparks Avenue. I think there's going, and the loading zone, I believe, is going to be recessed to some extent because the back of the truck has to fit level with the first-floor height at that bottom of the, because it slopes so much from the top to the bottom. So I think there's some issue about it's going to be down further and not up level. Is that correct?
The grade at the truck dock would be the same grade as the street. It's like, they're both about 17, elevation 17.
And then screening and whatever. But that, just so you know, from an HDC point of view, that bottom section is one of the most troublesome, so there will be changes, something, coming along that side.
I, you know, I don't know what happened in 2007, and I'm not saying that, I mean, stop-and-shop's still going to be on Pleasant Street. I mean, it's on Pleasant Street, it's on Sparks Ave, it's going to be the whole distance in between. So I don't understand the distinction of one side being a shopping area and one side not being a stopping, you know, shopping area. I don't understand that distinction. And, you know, as far as it being commercially-zoned, I appreciate it, I'm glad I have residential commercial property. But you've got to understand that my husband's parents and grandparents and the Fees, I mean, it was all one property at once, we're all related. We owned that property long before there was an HDC, before there was a Mid-Island, whatever. We, back in the day, just had horses roaming around, okay? So that's an issue right there with us. Let's see, there wasn't much that we haven't talked about. I'm not even going to hit the traffic thing. And as far as, you know, everybody keeps on saying, we have the same amount of people going to the stop-and-shop. We've got a bad situation now. I appreciate they need the new stop-and-shop more than ever. Believe me, I do. I have to shop there, too. I just want to make sure for the town of Nantucket that we don't make a bad situation worse, okay?
Andrew, do you want to address the layout of Sparks Ave? It was a 40-foot?
Well, it's a variable width, it's 40, at least in this particular section, I believe.
And it's traveled, and the traveled part is what, 22? Give or take. So I think one of Ms. Waterhouse's questions was, how do you increase the sidewalk from five feet to eight feet and not impact going past their property line? I believe there's still enough roadway left layout that the town owns in order to get an eight-foot sidewalk without coming, without having to do a taking, in other words. So it's all going to occur within the 40-foot right-of-way.
Can I clarify that?
Yeah.
The eight-foot sidewalk is on Pleasant Street.
Okay, that was not clear earlier.
Not on Sparks. It's on Pleasant, Lower Pleasant, that we're widening the sidewalk from what was proposed at five to eight. On Sparks Avenue, we had proposed a sidewalk along our boundary line.
North side.
The north side. And at the suggestion of, I think, staff and some other people that we talked to, we eliminated it from that side and have instead proposed improving the sidewalk on the southerly side, but not widening it. We don't propose any takings into people's properties or widening or narrowing the road, but we were thinking of doing a sidewalk similar to, I think, what's in front of Cumberland Farms, which is that concrete-brick combination, and trying to do it in such a way to accommodate the trucks that pull off the road for the businesses on that south side of the street. I think currently, the trucks park in the road and cause an issue, and we're hoping that we can construct a sidewalk in such a way that it can also act as a pull-off area.
Right. And I think if we did need easements, we would ask for them. The easements would not affect the ground cover, would not, you know, would have to be voluntarily, there's no takings proposed. But we wanted to make the sidewalk more uniform, more attractive on that particular side. It's a mixture, it has tar in between, which was brought up as a problem, so.
Anybody else would like to speak? Chris? We have not heard from you yet.
On paper.
On paper.
And thanks for addressing a few of those points in your own review. I'm Chris Young, I'm owner of House Fitters in the building at 16 Sparks Ave.
You can agree.
Oh, okay. I'm Chris Young, I'm owner of 16 Sparks Avenue, and I have a few concerns for my own sake, but also for just the general streetscape, and I think that that's something that has to be considered. I know the HDC will bring it up in their review. But the fact that the sidewalk has disappeared along Sparks Avenue on the stop-and-shop side of the road really worries me. I think that it is important during a review like this that improvements are made to the area. I think that stop-and-shop owes Nantucket that. Improving the sidewalks to include brick, as was required when our building was built. You'll notice that the brick sidewalk from the roundabout to the end of our property, and actually to the end of 18 Sparks Avenue, I think it's an attractive addition to the community, and I'd like to see that continued along Sparks Avenue, but on both sides. To eliminate the sidewalk on Sparks Avenue's, or stop-and-shop's side of Sparks Avenue is a huge mistake. For my office, I can see three trucks a day that make a delivery to the Dammy Flake. When that happens, they park on the sidewalk and create a huge problem. It actually shuts down one lane of Sparks Avenue, but it completely eliminates any pedestrian traffic. And if they're going to eliminate the sidewalk on stop-and-shop's side of the street, I mean, we're going to see three trucks a day eliminate the sidewalk on our side of the street. I question where all those people are going to go. I don't want to see them walking down the middle of the street. I think that, so I pointed out that there's always been a stop-and-shop on this property, that's true. I keep thinking, the only major commercial project on this island that has a zero setback for any reason outside of the historic quail where the setbacks are allowed, but to put that loading dock on top of the street essentially is a big mistake to preserving our streetscape. Driving along Sparks Avenue, we're going to be basically looking at the backside of it, as clarified as you can make a 360-degree design, you're going to be looking at the backside of a loading dock. And it wants to be set back. I know of the sidewalk there, I think that this building does require some additional consideration in that regard. Excuse me. What's not, hasn't been discussed as well is, is there going to be a fence protecting that? At one of our brothers' meetings, there was a discussion that there would be a fence kind of concern the trucks, and I haven't heard anything about that tonight. I'd like to know if that's still on the table and if...
Yes, there's going to be a fence.
Okay, so, okay, so it has been brought up, and maybe able to see the elevations, I think, is a little bit hindrance to those of us that are concerned about the streetscape. I implore you to request ridge poles to be put up in the corners of the building, I think that that would be a little indicator, an ally to those that are involved in the building, but also the general public. I really request that you request ridge poles to be installed at the corners of the building specifically along Sparks Avenue. And if that's something that can be done during this meeting, so it would be prepared, it would be nice. I think it's something that would make the public a little bit more aware of what we're talking about, the impact that this is going to have. But I hope you take those things into consideration and really consider the importance of improving the sidewalks on both sides of Sparks Avenue.
Thank you. Sarah, do you want to quickly respond?
I just wanted to clarify the setback issue. Because we're in the Mid-Island overlay district.
No, it is not.
We have a maximum five-foot setback from one side. The side that we have the maximum five-foot setback from is Sparks Avenue, so we're not on the property line, but we're certainly within that five feet. I think we're about a half a foot off Sparks Avenue. The most we could be off on that side would be five feet. And we meet, so we meet all of our setback requirements, and we're not asking for any setback requirement relief. And in terms of bridge poles, I think that's probably more appropriate for the HDC review once we have the elevations up and running, but once we do, I'm sure if the HDC asks, we'll put them up.
If anyone else, come on down.
My name is Mary McGinnis, I live on Sosher Road. I'm speaking for my mom who lives on 24 Sparks Ave. Can you please point out where her driveway would be on this map? 24 Sparks Ave, can you show us that?
It's right next to the Cumberland's.
Okay. What is in front? What is that green part, right there? What is this going to be?
Landscaping, old landscaping, right to the back.
Okay. Our concern is, we've worked with Cumberland Farms, to the left, there's a fence she has. What is she going to have in front? Is there going to be a big wall? Is there going, I just, what's going to be there? She's lived there for 56 years. What is she going to see? Is she going to see a fence in front, a fence to the side of her? I'm just very concerned.
There'd be a fence from here to the edge of the building.
Okay. So she'll see the building.
Two-level building, about 15 feet here and then 24 feet.
Okay. And I'm just going to echo, I'm not going to go into it, but I just want to echo what a lot of people have brought up tonight about the traffic on Sparks Ave. She has a very big family, we're over her house quite a bit, and it is very, very difficult on a summer day to get in and into her driveway just to go visit her, never mind try to get out of her driveway between all the traffic on Sparks Ave. Concerned, again, that was brought up tonight with the trucks. I would be very curious what times those trucks would be coming, as she is an elderly person. I also am concerned that there is no access on the Pleasant Street. I guess what everybody has said, why we can't re-flip it. You're looking at residents, resident, residents. There's three families here tonight that have lived on that street for numerous years, even before the first national was put there. So I just really hope that you work with us and you listen to us. Cumberland Farms did, we appreciate that. So we'd like to have stop-and-shop work with the residents on Sparks Ave. I don't know if anybody else from my family wants to speak, or anybody else, but I hope that you're listening, and I want you to think about the people who have lived there for well over 56 years. And I don't want to be saying, let's not, who cares about them, let's just ride them out. You have to work with us, and I hope that happens. Thank you.
Anybody else would like to speak? Somebody we haven't heard from yet, I'll get to you in a second, up there. And then you're next.
My name is Michael Fee, I'm also Mary's brother from 24 Sparks Ave. Looking at this plan here, it looks like there's only four handicap parking spaces. Is there a requirement to have more? That's one concern, because I have a handicapped child, and every time I try to go to the, or even now, I have a problem trying to find a space.
I did bring that up, just so you know, Michael, I brought that up before.
I see only like four up there.
I did bring it up, Michael, before, and I said it may be required, that they're only required to have four.
Okay.
But given the population here, I suggested that they add a few more handicap spaces the last time.
All right. Another question I have, there was talk that you were including Nantucket wines. Where is her loading dock for myself, who works for Cape Cod Express, to bring in her product into her store if she's included in that store? Where is she going, where am I going to bring my Cape Cod Express truck to bring her product into her store if she's going to be in that store? Yeah, Pleasant Street, well then, why don't we have a loading dock on Pleasant Street for the store?
Good question.
You know? It's just that, you know, just want to know. Okay? Thank you.
I know you guys have met with Dennis Egan. He's not the only one who delivers, and I think you really do need to talk to Cape Cod Express. They don't have splits, but they have big box, and they still need a loading zone. And they are going to have to deliver to the wine shop on Pleasant Street, and I don't think the pull-off is going to be wide enough for his trucks. So I would suggest that you talk to Michael about Cape Cod Express's needs, especially if you start adding other stores around there, it's going to be very difficult for him. Anybody else would like to talk? Yeah.
Hi, my name is William Kane, I live on 18 Sparks Ave. From the business perspective, it's just that, you know, Sparks Ave is usually clogged up three-quarters of the day anyway, or seven-eighths of the day, majority. But when you're demoing the store, you did not show me the map of the 106 spaces when you're demoing the store, and where are the employees and everybody else going to park? And not only that, but when you're having construction, you have at least three-quarters more space that you need for construction. Where's all that space going to go?
They do have a plan, I've seen it. Do you guys want to address that?
I just watch out for the safety of the kids, for them all.
Our point, all right, we do have a plan that shows the 106 spaces. I don't know that we showed it tonight, but we certainly can. Here you go.
That piece of the building's being removed on the south side, and the parking zone are going to go in there where the little parking spaces are now. It's just going to progress right back to the edge of the shop.
And then we have the staging area and employee parking down at the Craig property. So all the staging and, you know, the construction trailer and the, all the materials will be down there at the Craig property.
And you also...
And we're going to keep that as interior as we possibly can.
You also own that lot.
We also have the lot at the corner of Sanford and Sparks, where we can also have some temporary employee parking. And we expect that this construction phase from start to finish will be approximately eight months, so.
There is talk about also staging off of another closer property on the north side.
Another thing you've got to consider, too, is that, you know, them going from, the construction going from, to the Craig property, congesting Sparks Ave during the construction. That's going to affect our business and everybody else on that, on either side of the road, either Pleasant or Sparks Ave.
There is a timeframe on your construction, do you want to explain that?
Still there about 10.
But we're trying not to, we're trying to avoid, like, the plague this summer.
Yeah, all the construction is expected to happen during the winter.
Yeah, all the construction is expecting to happen during the winter. We're hoping to start sometime in September, and from September into May, and that construction period would go through that process at that time period. And we're not expecting to do any construction in the summer.
Our business is active.
Excuse me?
Our business is active.
Right.
All right, there's only so much we can do about that if you want it done, because otherwise if this is going on during the summer, it's a nightmare. Has anybody who was, anybody wants to speak who has not spoken yet? Keeping you up?
Yes. Can you put up the slide that I think it said fire station?
Julie, speak into it and identify yourself.
Julie Rainamo, 18 Sparks Avenue. And there was a slide up earlier that I had a question on. Yes.
I'm in the Downey Flake Building, correct?
Yes. So I am responsible for some of the trucks on the street, and we spent years trying to schedule deliveries, and that didn't work. Not my problem. What are, what are the red stripes on that slide?
We tried to show what the sight lines, the site corridors would need to be maintained in order to provide sight distance. So the line at the back, closest to the firehouse, is the sight line. Everything in front of it is where you want to maintain visual corridor. So if there is anything there, plants or something, it'd have to be low lying 2.5 feet or less. And so we're just showing the area to remain clear.
Okay, so on that other slide where the green wall was, where Mary was talking about the green wall, those plants are only going to be two feet high?
Yes.
They have to be low by our standards also. Those are the line of sight.
So they're really going to be looking at about 15 feet of wall?
Thirty.
Thirty. My, my concern here is that, I don't live around the corner anymore from here like I used to, but I walk Sparks Avenue, and I walk over to the Stop &amp; Shop a lot. And I would cross the street onto the Stop &amp; Shop property. There's at least a little bit of a sidewalk there. Now I'm thinking pedestrians on Sparks Avenue are going to cross the street. There's no sidewalk, and you're also going to be in the truck lane. There's no place to walk. I used to be able to go down to Wine and Spirits and then walk safely. And I don't see any access for pedestrians or bicycles or anything else with this plan. So I know you'll take that. It has to do with, that whole loading zone thing scares the dickens out of me. But, thank you.
I think they're getting that thing on the loading zone. Or just piling on now. Anybody else who'd like to speak?
Joe?
Is there a limit, Andrew, maybe you know, on how far the school zone could be extended? Or is there a limit to how close it has to be to the school? Do we know? Could it be extended further than it is? Because it seems to me the more you get down towards, it can't be?
Went through this with traffic safety. There was even a gap, you know, there's a slight gap in between the elementary school and the high school, because we wanted a flashing light and all that stuff years ago, and they said, no, there's too much of a gap, and it doesn't extend far enough. Now, obviously, things may have changed over the years, but just willy-nilly extending the school zone down into a commercial zone when it's not immediately proximate to school, I don't know how far we get with that. But I do think there are some issues with crosswalks and sidewalks that we have to deal with.
And then the second thing is, if you own that property on Sanford, can you use it? Can you use Sanford Road because you're in it?
It's also only 10 feet wide.
Well, it's an empty lot.
We can use it for the properties on Sanford Road, but I don't think we can use it for these properties, because that would be overloading that easement.
Yes, they're charging the...
Yeah.
I'm cheerful, I can call it. Would you go back to the double buildings, please? Have one showing the two buildings?
The two buildings, the one, the construction site, it plus what's left of the old buildings. Before that. I think it's Phase 2. I think it's 2. Yeah. Is that it, Joe?
I'm sure you don't have the two.
There you go. That's not the building, John. It's just sort of area construction.
All right, this is the building. Recently now, just so everybody knows, you've got to commit to tear down where the liquor store is, and here, there's a temporary, there's going to be temporary parking here, all in here. But my question is, is a five to six-foot drop from up here down to the street, has anybody looked into that of putting the parking in there, also at level?
John, that came, what we approved the other night at the, at the HDC was that it's staying exactly where it is, and it's just moving back towards the building. It's not being taken down to the street. It's staying right where the parking is now, level with the first floor of the building, because otherwise handicapped spaces wouldn't be able to get up to it legally. So the parking is staying the same and coming straight back to the building. Correct? And we already approved that at the HDC.
I comment was, one other point. When you get to the low point here, there's quite a bit of distance all in through here that will not be matched. You've got to do something balancing it. Thank you.
Are we winding down? One more quick comment. Because we still have another, like, eight things to do.
You mentioned that the construction is only going to be during the winter, and I fully trust you. We actually worked on a Stop &amp; Shop project in the past, and we know it goes like clockwork, and everything's wonderful. The only thing that isn't wonderful is Nantucket. And in the wintertime, our weather stinks, to say the least, as we're all perfectly aware, and things can get delayed unexpectedly. Is there a contingency plan in place if construction goes into the Memorial Day weekend area?
Andrew? What kind of stuff can be built in? If people aren't finished, we have given them extensions. We had to do that to the Dreamland just to get it over with. Andrew?
Madam Chair, that's a question best answered by the Stop &amp; Shop reps. I don't know if they do have a contingency plan. I know that on the plan, on the reconstruction of the downtown building, they managed to keep to that, and there were a number of pop-up problems that came forward that we were able to resolve, but maybe they have an answer to that.
Yeah, we have budgeted for winter conditions so that if there are delays, we will have double teams and additional contractors and so forth to keep it on schedule, because it's as important for us to be opened by preseason, particularly given the parking situation and the demand that occur at that time as it is for, for the Nantucket residents.
I think one of the other concerns is that you won't be without a grocery store, because you're not going to shut down what's left of the Stop &amp; Shop building, the current building, until that other one is up and fully operational and ribbon-cutting walks through the door. So it won't be like we're constructing this building, and we didn't get it done, and we've already taken the other one down. That's not going to happen. I know that's been a concern for a lot of people, then what do we do? So I think your timing is just as important for you as it is for the neighborhood. Any other comments or questions from the public? Carl? Carl's got one question.
This is a question for you, Sarah. This is the last time I'm going to bring this up. Could you, Sarah, please put up the slide with the Sanford, the additional staging area, please?
You just love that subject.
I love it. I'm going to let it go, I promise. I'm going to let it go.
I think it was the aerial, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was a Google. And what I would propose, if there was any way to turn Sanford into a doable truck lane, would be to come in on Lower Pleasant Street, come down, go over, go into the new site, come out, go back to Sanford Road and go back. You could avoid the entire section of Sparks Avenue that everyone's concerned about from the roundabout up until the driveway of the loading zone. It's just a proposal, but is it really, is it really impossible to get any kind of easement with your property that you own on, on that piece, the old club?
Everybody would have to sign off.
We only own 50% of the little piece that's next to the lot, so we own 50% into it. And then the condo association controls the rest of it. And I think there are 15 parties to that agreement.
Okay. Thank you.
I want to actually bring something up about this. Sarah, Newton takes their trailers through there every day to two gas stations, okay? Now, we didn't have a special permit to have semis feeding gas stations. And all of a sudden, it started happening five or six years ago when ethanol came into gas. You talk about something that's difficult. If this was a permit to have semis go to hatches and back into Mid-Island Shell or Mid-Island, you know, D&amp;B, we'd all be like, oh, that's never going to work! This is the stupidest idea I've ever seen in my life! So please, they're doing it every single day, a lot worse than this. But as far as Sanford Road, this is an interesting thing, because Newton drives up Pleasant, takes a left, which is not that easy there, that needs to be fixed, and then they come out and sneak in. It works, because you can see, okay? That's what I was trying to say earlier about the Stop &amp; Shop trucks coming out of the back of that building. You cannot see to your left at all, okay? So why is that something that just happens? And no, I mean, what are we, what would happen if there was a problem? I mean, I don't understand what the problem is to begin with.
With Sanford Road?
Right.
Well...
The legal stuff. I understand.
It's a legal issue. I mean, right now, as with many roads on Nantucket, many roads are private roads.
Right.
We have a high percentage of private roads on Nantucket. It's just the way it is.
But so, so this...
And a lot, and a lot of them are used as though they were public. Sanford is one of them. So we could probably drive up and down Sanford and do all these deliveries, but if at some, I would never want to have a permit that was, made that a requirement, because if at some point the people who had the rights in Sanford Road decided that we were degrading the road or causing issues with the road or safety, they might decide to stop us from doing it. And that's the risk.
I'm just living in the real world part of it, though.
But the real world part of it is, we all drive up and down Sanford Road without any right to do so every day of the week, willy-nilly.
Like the boulevard? Like the boulevard? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. One more call, and then we're moving on for the moment. Because this will come back on April 14th. So you can all regroup on April 14th. I know that the Stop &amp; Shop people would rather hear from you guys than not hear from you guys. I know Alan, you're here, and I know some of the other people in the neighborhood are here that have not really participated in this public hearing process. But the guys at Stop &amp; Shop, you know, you all can meet out in the hallway and exchange numbers, but I think you should all keep in contact while this process is moving. I don't expect to see it at the HDC until probably April, really. So there's nothing really happening there at the moment. But I suggest that you keep in touch, but anybody can call me or email me, and I'll tell you when it's coming. But I don't expect to see it until the middle of April. Joe, did you have one more question?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, what's the possibility of putting like a 12-foot driveway parallel to Sanford, if the Stop &amp; Shop property?
They don't have any rights? Is my understanding, Sarah?
No, no, it's their property.
The Craig, no, the Craig property, I don't believe, has any right to access Sanford Road at this time, correct?
No, no, I'm talking a separate driveway. A separate, a road parallel to Sanford Road.
On the Craig property?
On the Craig, do you own the Craig property? No.
They control it.
You control it? I'm just saying...
Well, Joe, the other issue is, I'm not sure how hot to trot we are on the planning board, having two parallel primary roads coming out at the same time, and that would be insane. So it may or may not work that way.
What could you stick it to the trucks all the time?
It should be a public road. Everybody uses it, but that's another, that's a subject for another day. So I expect we're going to move on. Chris, what?
Just have a question. You said that there's a minimum five-foot setback.
Can't hear you.
Maximum five-foot setback.
On the Mid-Island Plan from 2007.
Excuse me, a maximum, so you have to build within five feet?
We have to be, build within five feet.
Permit that can be granted anytime.
Zero to five feet.
Okay, so...
That's in the Mid-Island planned overlay district.
Now, the HDC may not agree with that from an HDC point of view. So that's why you have, you've asked for a special permit for that, right?
I think I did.
Check it.
Just in case.
Just in case, because I think the HDC is going to have an issue.
Okay. I just want to understand that, and realize...
I just don't want to get them stuck between the planning board and the HDC and ping-ponging back and forth, which is why, you know, both of these are going to be sort of tracking at the same time, and hopefully we'll get the elevations worked out, so they will work with what the planning board wants to do as well.
And just to follow up to that, how much room from the...
Still can't hear you.
How much room from the property line to the edge of Sparks Road, Sparks Ave right now, as far as eliminating the sidewalk? I'm just curious, what is left, you know, the town on the wall there and the edge of the road? You're talking five feet is how...
Oh, at least.
How much is left in the layout? I don't know.
At least.
About five feet. It's about... From the edge of pavement to the building is five feet?
No, no, no.
From the edge of pavement to the property line is five feet. It would be 10 maximum. We currently have it at about a foot off the property line, five and a half feet off the pavement.
Yeah, so I mean, as I'm saying, things may shift around a little bit, depending on how things are massaged. Anything else, or we're going to move?
Motion to continue.
John's made a motion to continue to April 14th. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
All right.
Great, thank you. And we're going to take a, like, a four-minute break.
Alan Bell's letter is good. Bell's letter is pretty good.
Three meetings in six days, huh?
Are you the primary reporter, you and Elise?
Uh, my and Liz.
And Lindsay?
Yeah, my, I try to.
You're still systematic.
Oh, yeah.
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 Seems like we're really under. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, you need to have that background. Right. Oh, my guys won some more awards this winter, which is good news. Congratulations. Guys are a pretty tight-knit bunch over there, working hard.
We are.
And everything's under, everything's under siege, man. There's so much, the boom is back to the vengeance after the great recession, man. It's like, oh, my God. Sometimes I wonder if I really knew what I was getting myself into for this. It's too late for that now.
It's too late.
Yeah, not anymore. Oh, there's one word that's always on the tip of my tongue is traffic. I don't, yeah. 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 I heard, hey, did you hear last summer about 120,000 people here for the week? I think it was race weekend, props weekend. And my wife and I, like, July and August for the whole time. Maybe, never know. Yeah. It's an interesting concept, and I just don't know how the infrastructure and the wells and the water and the sewer can handle that, but the vineyard has, it's a bigger island, but they have, they've had hundreds, 25, 130. I guess we'll have to wait until July, August.
No, you can't, you can't.
All right, everybody ready to go?
Yes.
John. Go.
We're back into session at 8:50. The next item up was Hither Creek. Do we have to mention that, that they're going over? Millies, anybody here from Millies that's going over to?
April 14th.
April 14th with no more comment this evening? Okay. Do we need to vote on that, Andrew, or is it just gone? All right, we've got Fisher's Lane subdivision, 101 Low Beach Road. The alternates cannot sit on that one because it's an actual subdivision. It's a minor subdivision of one oversized lot and a two oversized lot. Staff has no recommendations. There are no similar applications that we have found, but really, it's two conforming lots from one big conforming lot, right?
Well, it would be conforming provided you say okay to the particular road arrangement, which is, I understand the reasons for it, and I think Dan should be able to explain that.
Right. What we have?
For the applicant?
Dan Malloy for the applicant. If you recall last time, we were here going through everything, there was discussion about the roadway itself that goes out of the proposed right-of-way into an easement. And the reasoning for that being that in order to provide a wider easement, we'd have to either take down buildings or get variances for existing buildings on the property. So we have a site-specific case here that in all the ones I've done down here and elsewhere, I haven't quite seen one like this. In this particular property with the wetlands on site and the existing buildings on the site, we're trying to utilize the existing driveway as the access without having to really go out there and disturb the property by either altering wetlands, moving buildings, and really doing things that within the day would create the same end result. So what we're asking with this project is to allow the existing driveway to act as the roadway. We provide a 20-foot right-of-way, which captures part of the driveway and parts of it not, and making up the balance of the right-of-way with an easement. So the easement would contain the balance of the roadway where it leaves the right-of-way. And again, the purpose of the easement is not to get around the rules, it's simply to make it so we don't have to take down buildings to provide a 40-foot right-of-way for a 12-foot That's it. Other than that, it's a 12-acre parcel, like we've said before, it's being cut in half, approximately in half, roughly six acres each lot. We're not looking for further subdivisions, it's simply two exist, you know, two lots, one existing, one new. It's also received approval from Conservation a couple of weeks ago.
Would you be amenable to, Andrew, would this be even appropriate to restrict it to no further subdivision on either lot?
That would be fine. I don't see that as an issue. We're looking, like I said, we're looking for two oversized lots. There's really no desire, I think, with the access, we're talking about it, but I think as a board, you'd probably look for something greater if we wanted to do more subdivision.
Okay, thank you. Nat? No concerns? Uh, John?
No.
Two six, six-acre lots with no further subdivision. Is that all right with you?
Fine.
All right, somebody, this is a public hearing. No comments from the board. Anybody has any comments?
Well, one more quick thing I wanted to add, I didn't get to fill in. There were concerns, or there are concerns, I should say, about some abutting landowners to the north, the land trust and some of the conservation groups. It appears there's potential trespassing from our property onto theirs, creating paths and four-wheeling and whatnot. I have discussed that with them, and I'm quite confident they'll be fencing put up on our property to restrict that from continuing, both on our effort as well as likely permitting requirements for natural heritage, which will require us to only operate in certain areas of the property. So I just wanted to put that out there as well.
Has National Heritage actually given you the clearing areas yet?
They haven't yet. We're in the process of negotiation with them now.
Okay, thank you. Arthur, I know you probably represent the neighbors to the north, perhaps?
Yes, I represent the Scotiast Trust and the Nantucket Conservation Foundation, both of which are direct abutters. And we do appreciate the efforts that Mr. Malloy will make to get the owner to remove the encroachment on the Conservation Foundation property, but that's not really the issue here in this matter before the planning board. This application, as I see it, turns the subdivision control law on its head. We're looking at a situation here in which the applicant is proposing to do a subdivision in which part of the road, of the subdivision roadway, will not be within the layout of the subdivision roadway. Now, we know many cases where in the past, things have evolved so that the roadway is outside the layout, like Eel Point Road. And what happens every time an application comes before the planning board in a situation like that? There is an effort to get the road to the greatest extent that's feasible in connection with the project, move back to where it's supposed to be. The, I can see plenty of situations in which you would waive the width of the roadway, you know, at one time, there was a much greater rigidity by the planning board in terms of requiring the provision of a 40-foot roadway layout, obviously with the roadway being located within the layout. And since then, we've gotten, and in many cases, I think it's appropriate, to a situation with more liberality in that regard so that the, so that for a small subdivision like this one, you don't require a 40-foot layout. However, in this situation, they are between the property line and the wetland and the existing buildings on the lot. And if there isn't room to put a roadway that won't encroach upon the areas protected under the Wetlands Protection Law, and won't create a zoning violation with regard to the existing buildings, which they don't propose to remove, I think that's telling us that this is a subdivisible property, at least keeping the existing improvements where they are. And I think it just goes to the very basis of the subdivision control law, that a road will be within the roadway layout. And accordingly, I think that this plan cannot be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. We are, none of us up here have it in our packets. Did you have something before us sometime back?
Came at your last meeting.
Yeah, because none of us are, we're all looking just even for the map, and we don't have it. Andrew, do you want to respond to Arthur? Do you have anything to say to that? Technically, he's correct?
Well, I don't agree that it can't be approved. I, I agree with the fact that we have been less rigid in our application. We were encouraged to be less rigid. And I don't think sticking to rigidity is, is a good practice for the planning board to consider. There were, there are certainly instances where roads were created on easements in the past. And I think, you know, the board should consider what, the very specific nature of this project. I don't think it's, it means you have to do it every time. I think there's conditions that the board is free to look at. I don't agree that it cannot be approved. I think that's Arthur's opinion.
Andrew, can you, if you'll come over and explain it? The road layout is not in easement, but we dealt with that in many areas. But where is it?
But the access is here, outside of the layout.
See, it's already here. And here's the layout, and here is what they actually use for access, right here. This is on the north side of the road. This is existing. And these houses are where they are. And I know the goal is not to allow them to.
What about raising? I mean, that one in the back.
Buildings couldn't be moved. It's not essentially capable of moving. We're just trying to, they're not having the materials. Moving the buildings doesn't necessarily cause a benefit.
Okay.
All the kids can't sit on this one. No, we can't sit on it.
I don't want to, I just look at it.
He's sitting. Okay. I appreciate what you're saying, Arthur. John, do you have any comments on this now?
No.
All right, Nat? I appreciate what you're saying, Arthur, and I know we had discussion about this the last time when it came in. There is something to be said for not disturbing a lot of the vegetation and all that other stuff in that area. There is something to be said that we have done this before where the easement doesn't contain the road. I think Eel Point is a good example. Cormac?
Thank you. Chairman, I do want to be on the record here. Cormac Collier, Executive Director of the Nantucket Land Council. And I agree with Arthur completely, 100%. This goes, it's a fairly simple matter in terms of just my review, my background of the subdivision control law and our rules and regs, which are clearly based upon the subdivision control law, and actually, for the most part, a template that was provided by the, by the state in terms of creating rules and regs. It says that the, the way that is created, for which the lots have frontage off of, has to be adequate for access. There has to be an actual road that goes through that. Now then, after the fact, if you need easements and other, either for access and or for utilities, you could see that, but in terms of the layout of the paper layout, there should be a road that actually has adequate access for the, for the, for the use herein. And in my opinion, it doesn't matter if it's two lots, three lots, four lots, 10 lots, it's essentially either the road exists or the road doesn't exist. It's not a question of should you have a 40-foot layout versus a 12-foot layout. It's either it exists or it doesn't exist. And just hearing that there's actually an alternative makes me even more concerned that the alternative, in terms of actually doing the subdivision, that the alternative isn't explored. We move houses all the time here. There's plenty of people that make a living out of it, and it's done fairly quickly and fairly easily. If it's a cost issue, and that's the only issue that I see, that shouldn't be the basis for waiving the core of the subdivision bylaw. I'm very concerned about the precedent that this would set in terms of other lots. This is the first time, to my knowledge, that this is going to be done on Nantucket. So I think you should take that fairly seriously as you decide that, because now you're talking about four lots down, the Lorrain Station, covered with wetlands, access issues. Corkish, access issues. Other squam lots, access issues. If you're now allowing a, excuse me, a paper layout on wetlands with easements from other areas over uplands, you're creating all these lots that we had originally thought as subdivitable, they're now going to be subdivitable.
Do you advocate taking the road, the easement from the access from where it is and chopping down that whole length to get the road where it needs to be?
They have the ability and right by right to do whatever vegetation they work in on that area anyways. It's outside of mass heritage, the southern lot. So tomorrow, Mr. Bond and Mr. Briggs could go out there and mow the whole vegetation if they wanted to. So there's not a lot we can do anyways. So I think in terms of moving the house, I'd rather see the house moved in terms of preserving the integrity of the bylaw, I'm sorry, not the bylaw, the Subdivision Control Act and our rules and regs.
What is, what mechanism of relief is that special permit, correct?
The relief?
From the subdivision control law?
It's, it's the waiver that the board would or wouldn't issue.
Right. So there is a waiver provision in the subdivision control law?
This, this is an approval-required subdivision.
Right.
It's not an approval-not-required.
Not required.
You're, you're conditioning this based on the plan, based, based on whatever conditions you want to put on it.
And there was a statement made by Cormac that we've never done this before on the island.
our rules and regs.
What is...what mechanism of relief is that special permit, correct? From the subdivision control law?
It's the waiver that the board would or wouldn't issue.
Right. So there is a waiver provision in the subdivision control law?
This is an approval required subdivision.
Right.
It's not an approval not required.
Not required.
You're conditioning this based on the plan, based on whatever conditions you want to put on it.
And there was a statement made by Cormac that we've never done this before on the island. You want to run that down?
Well, it's...we have created in the past roads with easements.
John? E. Gardner, Eel Point.
And we're concerned about access for emergency vehicles to the properties, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, we'll...how we write the decision, depending on what you decide you want to do here, or if there's a way to revive the plan in some way, I don't know if there is any other options, but, you know, we will cover that as best we can in your final decision.
Is this something we should go to town council for ahead of time? I mean, as we're digesting this?
If you want us to contact town council, we will.
But we also need an extension tonight.
We've already signed an extension. I mean, I've added a few things.
It says April 4th, 11th, just so you know, action deadline.
He just signed those two.
Okay, good. So that's off the table. But I think it might be advantageous for us to go to town council.
We don't have a problem with that. I can give at least one other example, John Adams Lane off of...
I was going to say John Adams.
Off of Cliff Road. That's another one where the board waived the right of way, and part of that road actually travels outside the right of way inside the access easement that parallels it. That was done for a similar situation. The property was subdivitable, and the board granted a waiver so that the lots would be better. Not that there'd be more lots, just the lots would be more usable rather than having a wider right of way.
I just want to feel comfortable that it's sustainable and that we're not going off the rails over here. I agree with what Andrew says.
Right. I understand what they asked.
I understand what's also been said by Cormac and Arthur, but I want to make sure that we're going to go down that road, and it seems like the sentiment is in favor of it, that we have some legal legs to stand on.
And I'm not questioning that. I just want to say I understand the concern as well about setting a precedent. And obviously, you don't want to do that, and I wouldn't think...I wouldn't ask you to. In this case, you could clearly look at this as a site-specific issue or way of your granting. This isn't something that can be just randomly applied anywhere.
Right.
There's site-specific issues here that make it better and more environmentally sound to weave the right of way in this fashion rather than basically blast through and rebuild everything.
Okay.
And accomplish, at the end of the day, the same thing.
Thank you. Any other comments? From anybody? Somebody want to make a motion to go to town...have Andrew contact town council about this issue?
We have to make that motion, and we continue to the next meeting.
Contact town council?
Contact town council, et cetera, and get some definitive answers for us for the next meeting.
Okay, some findings are...Andrew, you know what to go for. John, Nat's made a motion to continue to April 14th and go to town council for advice on this. Is that okay with you? All right. You want to second his motion?
Yeah.
John seconded his motion. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
That was unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any energy you want to give staff to knock this stuff out? Peter Holly Lamb, Carolyn Lamb, 24 Pilgrim Road. This is a second curb cut. However, they had the curb cut until at least 2007, according to the aerials, and 2011 it disappeared. So they're just trying to put it back where it was. Is there anybody representing Holly Lamb?
Right here.
Right there.
Arthur Reed.
I've seen this so many times at the HDC, I can't stand it anymore.
I know. I know you're familiar with the application. Again, as indicated, this is a situation where there was a second curb cut on this lot. It was closed in just a few years ago. There were originally actually two dwellings on the lot, which were combined. And actually, since then, my clients, the owners, have bought an additional, not a full lot, but another piece of land that gives them additional frontage and area going farther down Pilgrim Road. Basically, we think that this makes sense. The parking area for this lot has to be in front of the house. There's no other place to put it because of the location of the house and also the wetlands. And it really doesn't work very well. At present time, I went over this this morning, and, you know, if you get more than one car in there, it's difficult to move around, having the second entrance, which will be a considerable distance from the first one. There's no place to park on the street, obviously, on Pilgrim Road. It's narrow and not in terribly good condition. And I think that this application makes sense, and I see that we have a favorable staff recommendation on it.
Thank you. Anybody...you guys are on. Anybody have any comments about this? Joe?
Just one thing, and not to hold it up, but I was wondering if the engineers looked at the topo or the grading in between the driveways, new entrances in the street itself. It seemed like that might need a little work to not create like a pond, any effect, or...
Well, they put in some drainage a few years ago, and the drainage obviously stays there.
And that's working? Working good there?
I believe, as far as I know, it is, yes.
No, that's all I have.
Yeah, obviously, they're much concerned with that whole issue. Yes, there is a grade there down from the area down to Pilgrim Road.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Carl, anything? John, anything? Nat? This is a public hearing. Anybody would like to comment on this? Seeing none, do you want to make a motion?
Close the public hearing.
All right. Nat made a motion to close the public hearing. John seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Somebody...what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve for staff recommendation.
Nat's made a motion to approve through staff recommendation. Any second over there?
Second.
Carl seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. One North Beach Street LLC modification, One North Beach Road. Anybody here? You're still here.
I am still here. Sarah Alge for the applicant, One North Beach Street. And Edward Sanford, I think, is still here to address any questions you might have. I think this is a fairly modest proposal. We propose to modify the existing major commercial development special permit down at One North Beach Street by putting on a small 160-square-foot addition for storage that will also house an entryway to the upstairs that will relocate the existing entryway, and then to move the air conditioning units to a deck that will be screened by a fence along one side of the building, to the extent necessary because the addition will cut in a little bit into two, three of the parking spaces. We're asking for parking relief, but the parking will continue to function as it currently has. We've shown on the plan the existing parking bumpers, and we're not cutting into where those bumpers are. We're just...but the spaces will not be the full 20 feet...
Right.
...deep.
And they all built...
On Cooley Street.
It will all be screened, and we can certainly agree not to do the work during the summer if that's an issue down there. I think it will be actually an improvement to the back of that building.
And of course, they'll go to the HDC, right?
Absolutely. That's our next...that's our next stop.
Do it at night.
Board members? Nat?
No comments.
Joe? Carl?
We up?
Yeah.
I have no comments.
Okay. John?
One question. You add this one and two, North Beach Street. I've got two listings here.
It's One North Beach Street.
One North Beach, okay.
Any comments, John?
Yes, thank you.
Anyone else in the public would like to speak? Have you fallen asleep up there ever? Okay.
I think it's enough.
Nat made a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second? Joe seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. What's your pleasure?
Make a motion to approve for staff recommendation.
It's made a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Approve the project.
All right. Carl has seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
That was unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Don Allen Ford.
This is your life's work, Don Allen Ford.
This is it. Good evening. For the record, Rhoda Weinman, we're requesting an amendment to the MCD special permit that was granted in March of 2004 when Don Allen was doing their construction. The original special permit was issued during this construction. Restrictive covenant was executed by Don Allen stating that the housing on the property would be used for employee housing. The only problem with that is that the housing's on 22 Pulpus Road, and it wasn't part of the MCD at the time. So that's part of this application. In February of 2005, the MCD was modified to eliminate the construction phasing, and in December of '06, an additional modification to include 26 Pulpus Road. 26 Pulpus Road was used for vehicle storage. There was a plan submitted at the time that showed 9 percent open space, and the board approved that plan. And we're at 5.7 now, but we will rework it and get to the 9 percent. So we're not asking for any relief, additional relief on that. In April of 2012, there was an amendment of a right of enforcement executed for future uses for 24 and 26 Pulpus Road. So this evening, we'll be for you to ask with the following: to include 22 Pulpus as part of the special permit, a determination that the parking provided at 24 Pulpus is adequate. And that's a tough one, because there's nothing that's particularly stable about that. The car is in and out there all the time, but we just want to be able to get that clarified before the board. So the two waivers that we're asking for is under 13911, the open space requirement. We're asking for that for 22 and 24. 22 now has 28.2 percent open space. 24 has 21.2 percent. So together, it's 23.2 where the 30 percent is required. So we're asking for a waiver on that for the shortfall. And as far as the five-foot screening buffer, both 24 and 26 have the five-foot buffer. 22 does not, so we're asking for relief on that. And in the back of 24, we want to put a fence. That was a request from the Director Butter in the back, and so that's part of this application as well to get approval for the fence. The one thing that the board should be aware of is we recently signed a license agreement with the county commissioners, where the county commissioners gave us permission for 22, 24, and 26 to do planting in the county layout for 18...roughly 18.8 feet on all three of those lots. So that will be done as well, be grass and hydrangeas planted. So with the intent to include 22 in the MCD, there was extensive work done regarding the drainage plan by the site design engineering. And Dan is here tonight. If you have any questions on that, we submitted all the plans. The surveying plans were done by Steve Sullivan. He's here tonight if you have any questions on that. Eric Evans is here. He's one of the owners of Don Allen. So if any of you have any questions, the four of us hopefully can answer them. And I'd like to ask that you approve this modification. Thank you.
Do you have anything to add?
Just one question through you. Did this require a certificate of water quality compliance? And has that been issued? Has that new one been issued?
Yes and yes.
Great. Thanks.
Gardner? Yep. Nat? No comments? Carl? No comments? All set? John, everybody's all set? You got a comment? Question? All ready. We'll open this up to the public. Anybody would like to speak? Or forever hold your peace?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
All right. Nat's made a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Seconds.
Any further discussion on closing the public hearing? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. What's your pleasure?
Make a motion to approve the application, modification, excuse me.
Nat made a motion. Who seconded over there? Joe? John actually seconded. It was somewhere over here. So motions been made and seconded. Andrew, are there any conditions that need to go on this? Okay.
Nope.
Any further discussion on the motion to approve? All those in favor?
I have a question.
Carl?
It's not an application, it's an amendment.
It's a modification.
It's a modification. Because they've already dealt with the open space, but differently. Now it's changing a little bit, and the parking's changing a little bit. Most of these waivers they've had for years from the ZBA, and then it converted over to the planning board. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. That was unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Nantucket Theater Institute. Is my understanding that this is going to be taken over to April 14th, but there are people here who wish to speak tonight and be heard, so we're going to go ahead and open it so you can have comments. I do believe Steve is here to listen to the comments. Steve Cohen is the representative for this. And I know you're not prepared to give us a full presentation because we don't have a heck of a lot of information in the file. We got basically nothing in the file. That's a whole nother issue. So I guess you're here to hear the neighbor speak, because he did come from off-island?
You know, I can give you two seconds where it just...
Two seconds?
...status update is that...
Okay. And is the Nantucket Theater Institute, 5 North Water Street?
Stephen Cohen for the applicant. The MCD was filed concurrently with the application for the variance and MCD revision for the tent that'll be used this summer. And we are currently working with an architect that specializes in theaters to come up with a design program. And based on where we are in that status, we wanted to wait until the next meeting and have a more comprehensive plan. If the planning board would like to discuss any specific features that you'd like to say, do this, don't do that, you know, we're happy to take any input, but my guess is you'd rather go home. So I'm not going to drag it on, but we're also happy to take any input from the public or the neighborhood in this process.
Does anybody on the board prepared to ask any questions at this time?
No.
Okay. John, do you have any questions at this time?
I have a comment.
Okay.
I think a tent on North Water Street, I said it last year, I'll say it again this year, is not keeping it. It's a complete...
John, that's a different application. This one is for the new building.
Right.
We've already done the tent, so this is for the new building.
I know. But I said, what I saw there this summer, I think is highly inappropriate, and what they do do, I prefer not to advance any generality to them to go ahead, then to build this building.
Okay. Thank you. Nat, do you have any questions at this time? I do have a couple of things that you want to know.
Sure.
It would be ultra-ultra soundproofing. That has come up many times from neighbors already on the tent issue. But with a permanent building, you can stand outside of a theater and still hear the banging going on, and I think there's some music. Consider hours of operation, because you are right at the level where you're running into nothing but residential. And we have to be really careful with that. So soundproofing, landscaping, hours of operation. Clearly, we don't have the elevations. No construction in the summer. Sidewalks, they should be widened. Specifically, how are you going to deal with the trash and the lighting are the issues that I was just...I jotted down very quickly today. So I don't want you to address them now. It's just that those are the things that I'm going to be looking for. And I believe we do have a neighbor who'd like to be heard. So if there's no other comments from the board, I believe we have a neighbor.
I'm Charlie Graeber.
Go ahead and put it right on your mouth.
Lift this thing up. Wow, that works. Wow, that works. Charlie Graeber, 4 Ash Street. And I'll pretty much hold off until...
Want to spell your last name?
G R A E B E S N B O Y E R.
G R A E B E R.
B E R, yeah.
And your what number, Ash?
Number four.
Ash Street.
Ash Street.
But you go all the way through from Ash to Ash Street.
It's through to, yeah. Most of those affect all the houses on, well, there are a lot to do.
Okay.
And I'll basically, you know, hold off. I'd like to just, I just wanted to know what was going on there. I, you know, we're sort of a cheek-to-jowl part of the just outside-of-town area. You know, I turn on my light and someone else doesn't sleep kind of thing. Everyone knows what I play in the kitchen. We already have, well, we already have...
You don't want naked to pass any windows. There you go.
We already have live entertainment in that part of town. Whenever I cook and dance in the kitchen, my neighbor says something, you know. So, it's, we know each other's business there and that's kind of the deal in that part of just outside of downtown. And we make, you know, good provisions for that. And we have for, I've only been there for 20-some years, but people have been doing that for, you know, over 150 cents. They've been doing it forever. It's always been residential there. And part of the deal, part of the reason it works is because everyone has skin in the game. Everyone, you know, that's, you get along, your boats rafted together and none of us are particularly commercial. And it's an ecosystem. It's a delicate ecosystem and there is some concern there about what happens when you throw, you know, theater. I write for a living. I'm all in favor of there being theater in terms of, but looking at it, it's a year-round live entertainment and concession spot. That's not a, everything there is a house that became a B&amp;B or a B&amp;B that became a house or one, it's, but, but a place that's just there to bring in, as what I read, 180 people per show, right in the middle of that live with amplification and concession. I just don't know, you know, I'd like to think that in 50 years, 100 years, if we're still, you know, if we're not drowned by the Atlantic in that part, on island, somebody's going to be able to still live there and have the same sorts of somehow surviving that close-to-each-other relationships and whoever it may be that fills those spots. But I don't know who's going to be filling a spot that's just there as an entertainment venue to do that. That's just a different, a different animal in the ecosystem. So, that's, I think, the concern that would want to be, want to be met.
I think it'd be a good idea if you guys exchanged contact information also. Because this will be coming back on the 14th of April.
Sure. And I'm here. So, I mean, I go off and on, but I'm...
You're going to lie up.
Yeah, you'll know, actually. Everyone else in town does. Thank you.
You're cooking for dinner, right?
Okay.
Let me ask one question. There, one of the design considerations we do have is whether or not the board is going to require parking. And as you know, the annual town meeting, this warrant article to waive parking in this district, but under the special permit you could require, or the MCD, you could require anything you want. Does the board see any need for parking?
He's shaking his head over there already.
Not the board, though.
Yeah.
No, it's all going away.
Yeah, we would intend to...
The building is covering the whole area.
Build essentially where the parking lot is. So...
Anybody comments about parking?
Not with the permanent building.
I, no. Doesn't seem like anybody's jumping up and down, like I have a big problem, they're going to lie across the parking space, so...
Yeah. I mean, the general, the general intent would be to have a large theater where the parking lot is, keep the historic building, you know, that used to be the real estate office where it is, and then have some green space in that front corner, which is also good for visibility and general aesthetics. But as we go forward with that program, if we're going to make a major change to it, we'd rather do it before, you know, we spend tons on design. So, I think if that, if that general layout works, we'll be coming in, you know, soon with more details for you. And I think in general, the comments that you made, Madam Chairman, are, you know, consistent with the, with the plan, that we want to be good neighbors and not have disturbances in the neighborhood. And I think that that's something that can be accommodated in the design.
Andrew, is this going to be like we did with the 17 Broad? Ask for contribution for sidewalk improvements or make provisions for bicycles, Steve, or something along those lines? You're going to ask for contribution for sidewalks or something?
I think in lieu of the request for, I mean...
Parking?
The current system was, is in request for waivers, but I, but I think in the normal review of special permit, if the article should pass, we would ask for the things that we asked from everyone to promote NRTA passes, to have NRTA passes for residents and guests whenever possible. We've talked a little bit about the sidewalk, that maybe the sidewalk does need to be widened, maybe the corner needs to be reconstructed. So, there's a number of things that...
Certainly the curb cut for the slope and the curb cut for the wheelchairs and whatnot.
Right.
Anticap accessibility. Okay.
I think we can, we'll work that in. We'll try and schedule a meeting with staff to design that front corner there. And I also note that this location is essentially across the street from the town's fairly successful valet program, which we think helps with the parking issue.
Did you get a copy of all the letters from the neighbors? You might want to come into the staff and get those and start addressing those.
Okay.
Because they lay out pretty much their concerns. And I think as you develop the design of the thing, the soundproofing is going to be a huge issue.
Yeah. I have the letters from last time. I don't know if there are any in the past three weeks, but I'll come in and get them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? Carl?
Just a question for staff through you, Madam Chairman. Can you give me the short answer, please, on the zoning article regarding parking downtown that you referenced?
It keeps going over you, doesn't it?
Yeah. I need to learn about it fast.
The super short answer is we're going to talk about it as soon as this public hearing's over.
Oh, yes. You can wait on that one, right?
That's a great short answer. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. Somebody want to make a motion to continue to April 14th?
I made that motion.
Nat's made a motion to continue to April 14th. Second? Joe seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. That'll go over to April 14th and... Watch what you do in front of your windows. Okay. We've already done the A and Rs. We've already done the secondary dwellings. We've already done the previous plans. Is there anything you want to say about the preliminary plan? You're not ready for that, right?
Yeah.
What do you want to do?
Well, I'd like you to review the staff. You know, in essence, you have a preliminary plan proposal. There are, there's a discussion about it, which is 35 lots. It's about a third of the Richmond properties. It's RC2. There's two new roads, A and B. All the lots are significantly larger. They're roughly around 20,000 square feet. I note that the majority of these lots could actually be created through A and R. So, there's a very small number of them on the interior roads that actually require an actual new road. So, I think that this is being submitted to protect some of the property rights that are there. I, I think it also illustrates why we don't really want to proceed with this particular type of division. I totally understand why it's here. But, and I have some specific, well, ultimately, I think there's some revisions to the plan that need to be done. I don't want to spend a whole lot of time on them, but I can go over them quickly. And part of it is related to their location within the sewer district and other things. What the board needs to remember is that once a preliminary plan is approved, it's followed up by a definitive plan within seven months. So, just because you approve this preliminary plan doesn't mean it's going to look exactly the same when it comes back or exactly the same as you've proposed.
But a preliminary for town meeting protects this.
Correct. Correct. And, and these lots can be re-divided. They can be proposed through approval not required. Again, there's a whole system of roadways that is either a public way or private way that the planning board's already approved in a prior AR subdivision. So, for the front lots that are in the sewer district, what you should keep in mind is that the existing lot plan, which creates the new road, which is really the existing road, Gremlin, but legally created, you know, gives about 146 units as a possibility there. That's residential units.
Like that?
If it were to be subdivided down, which I, again, I don't believe that's their intent, but, you know, this, again, why, hopefully, there'll be cooperation to work within the existing proposed zoning. The rear lots are outside of the sewer district. I do have a letter from Richmond that says that they will work with the existing zoning on those rear lots. So, I'm, that's not as much of an issue. Road B is basically, even though it's an existing road, is too narrow for the likely, again, as the planning board, you need to think about all the possibilities here. That road is too narrow and undersized for the potential that could be constructed. Needs to be wider. It needs to be more like 50 feet, the right-of-way, with additional easements for sidewalks on virtually all of those lots. Our subdivision rules and regs clearly require extensions and connections to other land. So, basically, there should be connections shown so we don't have gigantic long blocks into other land owned by Richmond. So, I'm suggesting lots 19, lots 16 and 17, lot 14, lot 11, 12, and somewhere around lot 9, there should be connections to other land so we don't create all cul-de-sacs that all exit out onto one roadway and then we complain about traffic. Okay? Got to, you've got to stop that pattern here. The lots in the front, lots 34, 35, 27, and 26, to the greatest extent possible, should not have direct driveway accesses out to Old South Road. They should be handled by interior driveways. And again, I'm, lots 27 and 34 may need to leave some sort of additional right-of-way for road widening or roundabout or some, something to handle traffic. Staff will develop, I think, specific recommendations on the interior roads. Lover's Lane would need to be improved. Existing roads would need to be improved.
They can...
There isn't a mention of sidewalks, which would need to be included. All the lots would need to be hooked to water and sewer. So, there's, there's quite a bit of technical issues that would come up here as well.
Is that something that can be solved between now and 14th of April? Are we in trouble with protecting that if we don't approve it now, subject to all of this?
It has to be submitted.
Yeah. It's been submitted. It does not have to be approved by that, that date. It's, the fact that they're submitted and they do need to submit some revisions to the plan will be handled, I think. And then, then again, they have the seven months afterwards to submit a definitive.
So, it's safe to say that if we approve it April 14th, that they could accomplish more of the things that we needed to accomplish?
I believe so.
Okay.
I was just going to add, I mean, obviously, there's a lot of technical discussions that still need to happen, but this is just indicative of our continued effort to work with you as the planning board and with the town. So, we would be moving forward pretty deliberately, but slowly with respect to what we would be doing in the area. There's a lot of property there. We recognize that. And we also recognize that we would like to see the best possible development that does not necessarily include a large subdivision. Obviously, we've been pretty clear about that, but we'd like to protect ourselves going forward, but work with the planning board and your goals for the area and hope that town meeting supports that.
Anything else to add, Mr.?
No, and I'm happy to see that this doesn't include all of the property as I, I think it's important that it covers one-third, which is the lowest, I mean, it's, it covers the highest, some of the highest density portions, but there's plenty of other interior land that was not included...
Right.
...in the submission. So, I think that is a good sign. It says there'll be cooperation on a lot of the other land.
Absolutely. I mean, the spirit of this is still to maintain the industrial, commercial aspects and to not move into any other higher-density use of the property. So, this was the minimal that we felt we had to do in terms of our own business plan. And going forward, we will continue to work with the staff and with the board to make sure that that property is developed in a way that is in keeping with the vision for that area.
Nat, do you have any questions? No questions? I can't sit on this. John, do you have any questions at this time? Or make a motion?
Make a motion to continue for April 14th.
Provided they continue to work out all the issues.
Right.
Is that what you want?
Yes.
Nat made a motion to continue to April 14th. John is a second? John made a second? Any further discussion of the motion? All those in favor? Thank you. Okay. We have the end of the business. Article 62. We're... Okay. We have some motion from the... They didn't make it through the agenda. Still have the opening. Okay. We're handing these out. We appear to have four. Is that where it goes over to the third floor?
We have, yes.
I thought we had more, but we're waiting for more to make a couple of buildings. Is that what's happening? Because we may have to meet before town meeting or something.
We're posting a meeting for 8:45, a four-town meeting, just in case anything comes up between now and then, it needs to be ironed out at the last minute, which is something that we always do.
Okay. So, we have four on the agenda. Article 62 led by...
Article 62 is the big article of all of our zoning bylaw amendments for this year. It's, it's a modification of four sections of the bylaw, sections 18, 19, 20, and 20.1. So, that deals with parking requirements, off-street loading requirements, screening and lighting, which we're kind of getting rid of lighting because it's now covered under the general bylaw, and driveway access. So, those four sections are being mainly reorganized because there was some mix-and-match between parking in the driveway section, loading in the parking section. So, we're doing some cleanup and then a few substantive changes. I believe, you know, we've made a few minor changes based on some feedback that we heard during the stop-and-shot proposal. We had originally proposed to reduce the parking space length to 18 feet. We heard loud and clear the board did not like that suggestion, so we've put that back in at 20, which was the requirement before. We have proposed an elimination of parking requirements in the CDT district. And one of the findings to waive parking is that parking is physically impossible for the applicant to provide. That's fairly across the board, the case in the downtown. We felt that it placed an undue burden on the property owners to come and ask for the waiver, and it constantly put the board in a bad position of having to grant parking waivers. Another change, very substantive, is to the loading zone. Right now, that's required across the board for all commercial businesses. It would, the change would put it into the purview of the special permit granting authority. And if it was a use that didn't require a special permit, then no loading zone would be required. The dimensional requirement in the bylaw was 18 by 35, sorry, 14, 15?
35 by 14.
35 by 14. And for a lot of the small commercial lots, that's a really large portion to devote to loading. And it had to be exclusive of parking and driveway and maneuvering areas. So, that was pretty difficult for applicants to meet.
You didn't get rid of it. What did you do with it?
It's up to the special permit granting authority to waive it or require it.
It could also, it could also...
Right. So, all of that's now up to the special permit granting authority. We changed the residential parking requirements. Only, the only changes pertain to removing requirements in the commercial downtown district. We'll have to change the planning board motion. We had proposed a strikeout of all the requirements in the LC district. With other articles this year, we would have eliminated LC completely. That didn't happen. So, we'll have to fix that in the motion. And the multifamily use has been eliminated from the bylaws, so we'll delete that from the chart. In the commercial parking requirements, there was a one-size-fits-all approach for all districts. And there was a reference to inside the core parking district and outside the core parking district. The parking district is not regulated by the zoning bylaw, so that was a little problematic. And we changed the commercial parking requirements for some uses to reflect districts that are, you know, in-town, where there's on-street parking... The parking district is not regulated by the zoning bylaw, so that was a little problematic. And we changed the commercial parking requirements for some uses to reflect districts that are, you know, in-town, where there's on-street parking and shared parking and that kind of thing, as opposed to out-of-town, where you have to provide parking on your own site because there's not on-street parking and that type of thing available. One waiver that constantly comes up at the planning board and the zoning board, the parking chart previously was applied so that there was a parking requirement for storage and ancillary office facilities that were part of a larger business. And the boards fairly consistently waived the requirements for those areas of the building because it was seen that, you know, those areas aren't bringing additional vehicles to the site. So your employees, who are already counted, are the ones using the storage areas. They're the ones using the office areas. It was sort of double counting. So we've put a provision in to require zero spaces for those areas in a building.
The storage itself is still one per nine hundred?
It's still one per nine hundred, if that's the business, like storage and warehousing. But if you had an office with a storeroom, you wouldn't have to count the storeroom. And I think that wraps up the substantive, oh, no, the big one, the Marianne Drive situation.
Yes.
That is sort of near the end, in the driveway access section. And we separated driveway width requirements between commercial and residential uses. There was some confusion in the past about whether or not Section twenty-point-one applied to residential only, or if it was residential and commercial. It's been applied to both. So we've separated out those requirements. And for parking areas in the R-five district only, which is, Marianne's a good example. Those applications are still on our agenda. There are some additional parking provisions there where you could have two side-by-side parking spaces plus one tandem space. I'm working on, with Kay in our office, some graphics to insert into the bylaw. So those will replace the older graphics that are in here now.
Tandem, right now, it's two, two and two?
The configuration that has been in the bylaw has not really been used because it doesn't work very well. So we've replaced it with some other options that are allowed by special permit only.
So they're not entitled by right to stack two of them? Two in the road, two in the interior? That's what they all are right now, except for two and two. Are we telling them that they can't do two and two now? They can only do stack one and not the others?
Now, the new language, just read exactly what it says.
I want to make sure we don't make their situation worse out there.
Oh, actually, I have the, thanks. So these still need a little bit of work. But this is what would be, ignore the core that's inserted into the parking spaces. But these are the configurations that would be allowed. So you have two spaces with less saving walk-in.
To one on one line.
On one line. Or by special permit, you could have two with one, same less saving permit, two with one. So this would be the planning board.
Okay. And what are the guys that are all doing this? Two and two with four?
What does our language say?
Are you only allowing the stack one in?
Hold on.
Because a lot of them are doing two and two in this one. Stack in.
I'm thinking about it.
It says tandem parking extensions to any such driveway configuration may be allowed through the issuance of a special permit by the planning board. In our five and ten districts, yeah, so you could do the double tandem.
By special permit?
By special permit.
They need to add the graphic because the graphic was, most of them are doing that right now. They're not splitting walk-in and all this stuff. They're like.
Well, right. And paving the entire front yards, which is, you know.
So I think we need to add that graphic.
Okay.
Two and two. Because I know one of the twos, some people are using a seven by seventeen to get that to work. What we don't allow is three.
We have allowed three.
Three deep.
We've allowed three across.
Yeah, but not three deep.
Not three deep. Well, right.
Okay. So that was my only question about that one. Anybody else have any comments about it? Four, five. And I'd say, right, she, the waiver, taken up, would it be more helpful in those areas that are, would it be more problematic?
John, that would be more problematic because then people would have to seek a variance as opposed to a special permit. And the criteria to meet for a variance is very narrow. So I think the special permit is, I mean, these still would have to get HDC approval for hardscaping as well. So in a way, you've got kind of both boards looking at it.
The reason I expect that is because of what I saw here, the control of getting rid of that tent building, building, that you want to waive all the parking, or second way parking?
Of that existing, yes. Yeah. Yeah.
We took the variance away from parking many, many years ago, probably twenty years ago I put that in. But the seven by seventeen is still allowed. One of the questions I had last year, Leslie, I don't think it made it onto this year's thing, and I've had it for quite a few years, is the, if you're going to provide one space, it cannot be the seven by seventeen space. That's an ancillary space. The one provision that I've always had a problem with for years is that people have been abusing that and putting Humango cars in there, and it's not working. So I always stood by the fact that the objective of that bylaw when we did it years ago was that the one space has to be nine by twenty. And if they want to add other spaces, that's fine. I brought this up multiple times. Is it too late to put it in this year? But it's still wanted addressed because people are still taking advantage of it, not really providing the parking that they need. So that if you've got one space that all you required, one has to be nine by twenty. I don't care if you have another seven by seventeen. Doesn't matter, it may. On the findings for waiving all the parking, what's the finding? Do you just have one finding? Or are you going to use all of them? That it's, providing the parking would have a significant impact on the historic integrity, and it's not contrary to sound traffic considerations, and yada, yada, yada? That's usually why we add, those are the findings we grant for special permits, under eighteen now.
What?
Those, all those findings should still be there for downtown, right? Or you're just getting rid of it downtown entirely, that's right.
I think we did change it just a little bit so that the findings were more consistent.
There's like three of them.
Oh, here it is.
It's in eighteen.
Yeah, I think.
There's three.
Yeah.
A, that the granting of such relief is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the bylaw. B, that full compliance is physically impossible for the applicant to provide, or if physically possible, would have a significant adverse effect upon the scenic and historic integrity of the neighborhood. And C, the granting of relief would not be contrary to sound traffic, parking, or safety considerations.
Yeah. I always memorize that.
So the change is adding the language that if physically possible, would have a significant adverse effect. Because there are instances where it could be possible.
But it's horrible.
You're cutting down trees, or intruding into landscaped areas, and just because you can doesn't mean you should do it.
That language is always in there. We just want to make sure that we still are rolling that way.
Yeah, the motion needs to be corrected to show what's being removed.
Right. Because that language has always been there. Okay. Anybody have any other comments about that, this Article sixty-two? Anybody from the public want to have a chat? Doesn't look like they're jumping up. John, still awake? Okay. Somebody want to make a motion?
Motion to, we've got to bring this.
Make a favorable recommendation.
Favorable recommendation, and with the changes in the motion.
The addition of the extra schematic. Leslie, anything else you want in that motion?
Are you going to have that schematic in?
Yes, it will be in the bylaw.
Yeah, they're always in there.
Just these outdated ones will be removed, and the new ones will be inserted.
Is there anything else you want in the motion besides the amendments? Yeah, he's made the motion. You want a second, John? John seconded with those amendments. Any further discussion? And it's only the three of us. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thanks. You guys can ask away. Can't vote. Okay, that was unanimous. Now we've got Article sixty-six, and I've already spoken to Leslie about one of my comments. So Leslie, you want to roll with that one?
So on the second handout, that just has two definitions on it. Sixty-six is the citizen article.
Chris, are you on?
Yes. To modify the definition of apartment.
The second, the little one, the second one. Right there.
Okay, go for it.
Sixty-five is pre-existing non-confirmed.
We closed that one already.
And sixty-four?
Yeah.
Just one moment. Just have these four. I can't remember where we had sixty-seven.
Okay, we're good. So citizen article to amend the definition of apartment. Our previous definition only allowed apartments on the second or third floor or basement of a commercial structure. The citizen article suggested that they should be allowed on the first floor. We proposed that apartments on the first floor not occupy more than fifty percent of the first-floor area so that the commercial feel of the structure would be maintained. At the last hearing, the board seemed okay with that, except Ms. Williams raised a concern about corner lots. So we propose that the change now say, "An apartment shall not occupy more than fifty percent of the first-floor area and shall not be located in a portion of the structure that serves as the front elevation facing a street."
The, it's still got a problem. Because if you read the bylaw, you have double frontage. So when you say front elevation facing a street, are we going to consider the side of a structure the front because you've got double frontage? Hey, I'm just heading Marcus off at the pass.
What do you think? Is there another word?
I don't think that there's so many of these that we really have to worry about it, but serves as.
Architectural front? Because you picked it, when you don't have it, you picked it. When we have film products in R-five, and I think it was, there were two zones.
It's not a defined term.
They don't exist.
It's not, but. We're going to search for a defined term in the zoning bylaw, quickly.
It's in sixteen, I believe.
Architectural?
How much of numbering of the property?
Because the bylaw requires that have double frontage.
I want to be able to say, aye, or something. She says a twenty at the meeting.
What if we use the term frontage, which is measured along any single street line of the lot?
Unless you're in the R-five, is it usually R-one and another district? There are two districts.
R-one and RC.
Yeah, and that's concerning me that we use the word frontage. Maybe front is better than frontage. Because you're using elevation and took out the side, so maybe front elevation is enough, Andrew? Since you clearly have a front door on something as opposed to two front doors.
Right.
Unless it's a duplex, it's a whole different thing. It's typical. There is front elevation is probably better.
Okay.
It gets away from frontage, which you need to do frontage.
Okay.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
Fine as written.
Fine as written. You had that happen? And then there's setbacks or all that. That doesn't generally happen in the R-five. It happens in R-ten, R-twenty, or whatever we call it now. It's done that many times. Well, I've got my frontage now, I'm going to change my frontage to this street, and all of a sudden, they've got their setbacks along any special permit. That's not going to apply to those, is it? A problem? Because those are outside the frontage, the double frontage apartment. I think it's probably relevant.
So close the public hearing.
Somebody want to close the public hearing?
Should we close the public hearing?
Wait a minute. This is.
They can't call.
The portion of the structure that serves as a front, it's on the second floor facing the street.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Leslie, guys, hello?
Oh, it's first floor.
Yeah, please approve.
I think we still have an issue.
How about?
We.
You want to play with that again?
I think, we just like clarification that it's clear that it's for the portion, the portion that's facing is on the first floor only. So the second floor that faces is not included. It's just first floor, correct?
Do you want to add that third floor?
So we just need to make sure that we're clear that, because I think the way it's been revised isn't clear.
Right, and you may end up with a second.
The second floor is part of the frontage, the frontage, so.
So how do you want us to do that? You want to amend your motion?
We'll fix that.
The clarification. Nat's making a motion to approve the clarification. John, through the second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, anyway.
Thank you.
Article sixty-seven.
Article sixty-seven, I believe, was continued, maybe because of some confusion with the LC district, and that number just needs to be removed from the article.
And there was an issue with the parking.
In the parking chart?
Rural parking lot as a use that we needed to take out, which we did.
So would we just, slight amendments, guys?
Yes.
I'm calling a motion to posit a recommendation, articles that accept all those corrections.
Do you have a second, John? Any further, you still have? All those in favor?
Aye.
Can you put them on the yard end, if I?
Yeah.
Sixty-eight, are you last? Come on, hurry.
Yes. Sixty-eight was held because of this ground cover definition amendment, and the sheet that I handed out to you shows the amendment. So if anyone wants to just quickly read it, and if you have any questions, I can answer those. The intent is to remove from ground cover portions of a structure that are essentially underground. And there's an issue right now at the ZBA. Do you want to remember that? Yeah, well, a bulkhead was covered, and it's under a porch that's unenclosed. So the unenclosed porch does not count for ground cover, except for the thirty-nine square feet or so that's over this former bulkhead that's part of the foundation. So that's basically what that would address, that type of issue.
Are your, this is the horizontal area of the lot covered by structures. So I'm taking that to mean the elevation generally.
A house over a foundation basically counts for frontage.
No, no, the, with the measurement, there's a difference between the structure of the house.
Yeah, they're not changing house for equipment. Going forward as opposed to the foundation. Yeah, that's not changing.
Is that defined somewhere in the law?
Elsewhere. I don't think so.
It's measured, as you say, at the foundation.
No, I know it is, but is it?
Yes. Because we had to change it. We changed that ground cover track a dozen twenty times.
Unless it's in structure.
Yeah, because this is only the exception. But we did, we did it to the foundation more. But we did, we did it to, we did it to the foundation wall, where you could be to the cornerboard, and then we fixed it about five years ago.
I do.
The foundation wall, excessive, you have cannoli, we're living there.
Ground cover ratio?
And it's in the ground cover ratio, I believe. I can't remember where else. It's local paragraphs of ground cover. And it could be up in sixteen.
But we did do it. I mean, that's what everybody's doing. It's just one more one. Almost on clock.
Yeah.
Oh, it was in the definition of structure. Was covered at grade by structures.
It's in there. I don't remember doing it because of the.
I remember because Jerry in our office had an issue with her shed.
I almost think it was in the definition of ground cover, and it was replaced with this language, the horizontal area of a lot covered at grade by structures.
No, it's where you measure it. And where we measured it to was something very.
I don't have that page.
It should not have been taken out if it had been taken out, because there was a lot of confusion among the surveyors as to where you measure. Because when you were here the first time, it was to the basement. But when we came back, it was to the cornerboard, and then we put it back to the basement because of the sheds, if you recall. It's a shed. It was a one hundred and twenty foot shed is a count of ground cover, but if you measure it to the cornerboard, it counts for ground cover.
Two thousand and three?
The foundation was a hundred and twenty square feet.
I don't know.
So quick for the shame of it. Did you guys take it out at some point? Shouldn't have been taken out, because that was, that's been an issue for forty years. I know it's in there. It used to be in there.
I do remember it.
Because all the surveyors, I just went over to doing it by foundation instead of cornerboard.
Well, we're, we're.
We used to call it the moment, so I can, I can. And then had it at a height, that was always.
Was, still is.
It needs to go back because it caused fifteen billion applications in the ZVA. All right, so those are, if you find it again, otherwise it needs to go back in the hall.
Well, that'll have to go for future, anyway.
Fifty percent.
No, because that language is already in the bylaw. We weren't proposing to change it. We're just adding additional language.
Close interiors, please.
All right, so anybody have any other comments about this? But Leslie, that has to be cut down. Because it took us a long time to get it fixed and to make it back to the building. This?
For all time meeting for the other thing.
Yeah, the other piece that's missing has to be back.
It just buried somewhere totally random. All right. We'll investigate and report back sometime.
I have an old thought.
In time for next year's town meeting.
Fall. And then we're sort of waiting, especially if Marcus finds out it's not coming out. Okay. Anybody have any questions about this one? You going to make a motion?
Yeah.
That, we have kind of made a motion to make a recommendation on the ground cover issue. Second, a second, any further discussion, all of us in favor? Who else? Are we done?
I have a comment from Ken. Question. Question. Why are they all no at the G? I know, why are they listed, and you know, if you do get, you figure out.
These, John, these are notices of intent, and they're required to notify the planning board. If you want to make a comment on them, we can, along with other people who are notified. But normally, we don't. And they're in the office if you want to take a look at them. But generally, they're, they have to do with some, I think, most of these are wetland-type issues and.
My question, checking the board, they have to update. What was the amendment?
That approved our zoning that was passed at the special town meeting.
E and F was, that's the board.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else? Jerry, I want to do a jury. All of you guys? Um. I think there's five. All of them, one, huh?
Nice job, this chair. I haven't always had a chair.
That is my office. I have never aspired to.
My back. Actually, it wasn't my back. It was like a muscle.
Okay, everybody? And then you remember when Steve Scanlon called, called up? And then Bender started to do the middle of that. He missed another game.
Stop asking questions. I got carried away.